Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. This is Monday, November the 6th, 2017, at 7:00 P.M. here at Greenwood City Hall. Mr. Gary, would you call the roll, please?
Hey, Z Brown.
Here.
Dr. Lee Johnson, Ms. Sebastian, Rob Towne.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Senator.
Here.
Senator, there is a forum.
Thank you. If you would, please rise, and we will start out this evening with a prayer by Brother Ronnie DeHill from Greenwood First Baptist, followed by our flagrant Williams by Chief Phil Dawson.
Good job, guys, report. Well, we thank you so much for our community, for all the blessings that we enjoy. Thank you for the leadership that we are blessed with in this community. We ask your guidance and direction on this meeting. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the things that Greenwood offers. While we acknowledge that it all comes from you, so, God, we thank you. Again, we ask you to guide and lead what's about to take place, and we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would ask that the council look to the minutes for October the 2nd, 2017 council meetings, and also let it be noted that Councilman Dr. Johnson is here.
Better late than never.
Thank you. We have the motion and the second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Towne.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Thank you. No mileage report this evening from the mayor's office. Again, just a quick thank you, as I've been doing for the vehicle that the council decided to purchase a few for last year, so we're giving that instead of mileage report. Reputations and acknowledgements, acknowledgements, excuse me. I would like to, first of all, thank the city employees. I know the street department was heavily involved, Parks Department, of course, Fire Department, everybody that I'm missing that were involved with our Halloween Trail of Treats this year. It got rained on a little bit, got a little soggy, but it was a huge success. Of course, we worked in conjunction with the high school, Joel Skaggs, who is the high school to make that happen, make it work, and very successful, and a lot of folks this year, so thank you for that. We'll get right into our committee reports. Sebastian County Boys and Girls Club, I know these folks have typically, I think, have turned in a written report. I don't see Kenny here tonight, so, okay. So if you have any questions regarding his reports, you can give them to Tammy, and we'll relay those back to Kenny. I know they're real busy with all their events out there, so. SRCA, Lisa Moore is not here, but she also turned in a report, and I was supposed to...
Invitation.
Invitation to lunch for everybody, I think, the council for sure, the elected officials, sorry, elected officials for sure. Friday, they're having their Thanksgiving lunch over at the senior center, so, let it air. And again, if you have any questions on our report, let us know. Parks Commission, don't see Ms. Bell here this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. There she is. So if you have any questions for, do you have anything, Ms. Bell, that you want? Okay. If they have questions, they can relay that. Gary Grimes Consulting, I believe Gary's here this evening.
Don't mind, I just thought something. We've got a busy night. With me tonight is Representative Matt Cage. Matt, could you come forward? Matt has, is our, is District 76, State Representative, the mayor of state senate, but also, I want to even share with you something that he's seen in a little town that's not too far from us, and also, I think we can talk about the highways just a little bit. I know we're busy, we're going to move on, but also, I think we need to think about, and think about our law enforcement after the Southern Texas incident. I think everybody is just overwhelmed across the nation. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I was in a meeting this last week, and we were in discussion about economic development and the tremendous things you folks have going on down here, and the size of your town, and how it's growing. And it brought to mind a visit that I was invited to, to a small community in Georgia called Rome, Georgia. I see some hits, not in. If you've ever been to that community, it's a community slightly bigger than yours. They're, I think they're up to 35,000 people now, but they were in the 11,000, 12,000, 13,000 range. I decided to take their community and grow upon all the good things that are going on in Greenwood. It reminds me a lot of what Greenwood has going on. Your outstanding schools, your athletic departments, your city government pact right here. And it dawned on me that oftentimes, we don't share what we know in a region. And I would just offer to you that Rome, Georgia might be something you want to look at, Mr. Mayor. I mentioned it together. I think Gary was actually in the meeting where I brought it up, but they do economic development, right? They literally, Randy's, our state chamber, took the economic developers, the job creators from this state to a town, 30, at that time, 30,000 people, to look at what they're doing with their operation, and how they treat their, educating their next generation of folks to be prepared to stay and work in their environments, et cetera. So, and then this morning at lunch, or the meeting you chaired earlier, you mentioned, I asked if there was anything you want me to talk about, if you wanted a brief update with freedom, regional intermodal transportation reporting, building of roads, railroads, river ports, and airports in this region of the Sebastian and Crawford County. We received in the mail today that we've been approved as a project to study and ask for some money to bid on building the bridge and the I-49 from Jack crossing up to Almont East to Kibler. Now, we knew that was on the STIP, State Highway Improvement Plan, from now till 2020, but to get the letter from the director of the Highway Commission saying you'd have been approved and funded, that means we spent dollars on that project, federal dollars, and it's federal law that requires you to be under construction inside five years when you spend federal dollars. So if we don't get Company X to come build that road, that interstate, Director Bennett from the Arkansas Highway Transportation Department knows that that's a possibility, but he also knows because he's spent the money putting that together, he will have to build that in his budget. The difficulty there is that will take a lot longer, private-public partnerships, P3s, those tend to get built very fast because they need the revenue streams to put that highway. So, I personally think that that's the best way to build that section of road, but I think it's the best way. A company that wants to build that road, to be a part owner in that road, will want to see that road built from here to Queen of the Mountain to Texarkana, and I can clearly see them figuring out how to do this, keep through the rest of the world. So, that's probably the most recent update. We have a live fish on the fishing pole. If you were out, big fish, with regard to building something on our river, but it's still in the side of the bay, it's probably not going to be able to be fed that year, or the last month. So, Mayor, I'd answer his questions, please. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much, and that sounds like a road trip. I've always wanted to go to Rome.
Just real briefly, he took about 45 of us from around the states, and it's such an inspiring town, the way they treat their kids in high schools, their businesses. You can go in and get gas, and somebody could be gassed. Clark will tell you, this is the greatest town to live in, and it's like 90 miles from nowhere, to the ABC, Atlanta, Birmingham. So, basically, for us.
Give him mine. We have a parish in London also here.
I've heard that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Johnson. In May, is you construction? I don't think Michael's here this evening. He gives an update on anything, although I'm not sure he's supposed to be, but Michael's on. Is that Waterway Park Commission, Mr. Rattery? Don't see either. I have, they're great, no report, okay. Okay. Again, council, if you have questions or time regarding the written report, let us know. We'll get those to those folks that can answer your question for you. At this time, we have our citizen forum. The procedure has been, for many years, but not everybody knows it as you come in, so I'll tell you real quick. We did have a sign-up sheet at the back of the room. If you came in tonight, and I do have three folks that have signed up. If you did not, you get a chance, if you did not know to sign up, and you want to speak tonight, you certainly can still do that. We would just ask that, after these three gentlemen get through speaking, you raise your hand, we'll acknowledge you, you come in microphone, state your name and your address for the record, and you certainly have an opportunity to do that. So, I did want to make an mention, too, as we were speaking, for the record, that Councilman Lance Terry is here this evening, not so helpful, we'll counsel him. So, first on our list this evening is Master Ronnie DeHill. Sorry, if you would, not that we don't know you, but if you state your name and address, please.
My name is Ronnie DeHill. I live at 183 Island Circle in Greenwood. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this issue of alcohol being sold in Greenwood. I can assure you, I'm not here to preach a sermon, so just relax. I know bad, these preachers can be long-winded, but tonight, my words will be brief. But I do want to be clear, and I do want to speak with passion and conviction. My position of this is not so much from a religious viewpoint, but from my own personal experiences with people I've dealt with who have been impacted by alcohol, and that has led me to the position that I stand on tonight. I've seen the effects of people who struggle with alcohol addiction. I've heard them say many times, "I wish I would have never taken that first drink." I've seen it tear marriages apart. I've dealt with kids that come from alcoholic homes, and I've seen the struggles they have. And I've conducted funerals and grieved with parents that lost a child because of a drunk driver. I've experienced the hurt that many people suffer because of alcohol. I know you might say, "Well, is alcohol the blame of all that?" I do know that people have a choice, and they're responsible for those choices, but I've seen the negative impact that alcohol can have on people's lives, and I can help, if I can help keep alcohol from being sold in our community, then I must voice my position. I'm not on some crusade to keep people from drinking. People want to drink, they can buy it. But Greenwood is a unique community that has earned a strong reputation for being a great place to raise a family. I meet and talk to a lot of people who have moved to Greenwood to raise their family here. All of them moved here with the awareness that this town doesn't sell alcohol. I pray it can stay that way. Here's the bottom line. I have two teenage daughters at home. My counsel to them as a dad is this: Because of all the hurtful things associated with alcohol, the best advice I can give you is to abstain. It's the wisest decision for an individual, and I believe it's the wisest decision for Greenwood, is keep alcohol from being sold in our communities.
Excellent.
And then, thank you, Brother Ronnie. Mr. Todd Hales.
My name is Todd Hales. I live at 20810, Highway 7 plus south in Greenwood. Unlike Ronnie, I did preach a sermon, but it was short, and light for, so I agree with everything he had to say. I'm here to encourage you to keep alcohol out of Greenwood. We live in a community that, by and large, values our Creator and His work. Prayer to start this evening indicates that. We bow our heads, and we pray to our God, and I'm thankful for that. It's a remarkable thing that we are able to do that in this community, and we continue to do that. But because we are people who praise the God, we're also people who listens to His word. And most believers know that the New Testament forbids drunkenness. Most of us can think of passages, like verse 30, which Apostle Paul says, "Drunkards will not inherit the kingdom of God." Some pretty strong language, it gets straight to the point. But beyond drunkenness, there are passages in the text that help us understand the dangers of alcohol. One of those passages that I want to mention to use in Proverbs, Chapter 23, comes from the wise man. Proverbs, Chapter 23. Beginning of verse 29, he asks a series of questions, five questions. He asks questions like, "Who has sorrow? Who has bruises with alcohol? Who has bloodshot eyes?" He asks those questions, and then he answers. He says, "Those who linger long over wine are those who go in search of grace to the Spirit." Now, that's something we can relate to, because all of us have seen, as Ronnie said, we have seen the effects of alcohol. We have seen families suffering with alcohol. We have counseled many times married couples who are having trouble because of alcohol, or at least it's a contributing factor. We've seen children who struggle with abuse because parents are intoxicated. We know about that. We've seen that. And so the wise man is saying, "Who has those problems? Who is it that struggles with that?" It's the folks that are trying to drink. And then he says in verse 32, he says, "And the last it is the alcohol. It stings like a light, and it lights like a sword." We know that. We're familiar with that. The nice thing about the text, though, is God always gives us a solution to a stated problem. He always says, "Okay, here's what you do avoid." And so the avoidance is in verse 31. And here's what he says in verse 31. He says, "Do not look on the wine when it is red, when it sparkles in the color, and when it goes down the stream." That's a simple solution to a huge problem. Just don't look. If we don't look at it, we won't drink. If we don't drink it, we will not commit anybody, and that's the logic that the wise man really dodges and provides for. For years, Greenwood has been a community that made it relatively easy, compared to other communities, to not look at it. It's been fairly easy to avoid it in Greenwood, because it has been illegal to sell it. What we're asking is for that to continue. It's making it easy for those who do not want the after effects to avoid. Ask you to do that based on your character concern, and it might as well be our stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Newcomb.
I'm a member of the council, counselor, speaking to me a while ago, but I was out of town for years. I've been very happy. Oh, yeah, I worked last year. My purpose coming up here is to state my opinion. I don't allow alcohol to stand. I am not here to take a vote. I'm not here to judge a vote. I'm simply here to state my opinions and my observations. I want all the people voted in this town to write, and to allow people to make this town red. I've got to vote for people who are totally wrong. There are about 4,000 registered voters in Greenwood. It takes four towns of votes to pass this board. How about that was uncovered this time. No four people, but 1/10 of 1% of the voter population in this town. I do not think it's fair that 1/10 of 1% of the voters in this town make a decision. That's so important to vote. You got a decision to make, you have to make a decision. I've done that business for six years. I'm not real sure I ever saw a car like this. This is important to this town. This is a big event. It could be life changing. It's important to the people. Everybody, I've heard people talk about the sales, the revenue from this board. I put some numbers together, and I think I'm level with the sale. I don't underestimate the sales. If they were able to sell 1,000 drinks a month, and that was priced $3, I would pray, I may not be lying in that price. That creates $3,000 a day a month. If you had a 10% tax on drinking, that's $300 a month. $3,600 a year. If we were $3,600 a year, we're in trouble. If you have a 5% tax, that's $150 a month, and it costs $1,800 a year. If you had 2% tax on it, that's $60 a month, a big $700 a year for the company. We have better things to do with our time, and better ways to make better money making this town with the size of alcohol. These figures don't take into account first responders, fire department, police department, those expenses when accidents happen, when D.W. guys, you guys have them in this town. As you have heard, we can make this decision. I'm asking you, as you mean, deeply consider your vote, and I'm not going to take a vote. I want you to have it in the background, like, of your conviction. I pay you for this. A long time ago, 38 years ago, I was a district engineer for Old Town, a builder. I got a call at 2:00 in the morning, one spring. My driving was on the road all the time. It was my job to keep that pipe rotating from that road every year. I got a call from the Hollywood Patrol. There was a drunk, a van, a bar. Got in his car, hit the gas, lost control. Just so happens, at the split second, when he hit the street, my driver combined his truck. He killed my driver, and they killed him. You don't know what it's like to have to go and knock on doors, and then why, I'm sorry, you're hurt. Six, seven months later, I got another call. 3:00 in the morning, from Hollywood Patrol. I didn't have no one to call. I had somebody take a truck off my lot, unawed. They went to Oklahoma City, party, got drunk. If they get it back home, they came up a car with a man and woman, with kids, and I'm sorry, this is upsetting, but a man and woman with three kids. They hit him with 95 miles an hour. They went over the top of the car, the three kids were killed. My wife found out yesterday what I was going to say. We've been married for 33 years, I'm married for one year. The business still works. I ask you to think carefully about your decision, because the decisions you make today may haunt you the rest of your life. For 38 years, I've been a lawyer. I can't change the past. But it hurts, it hurts bad.
Thank you.
You know, 26 years ago, my wife and I, I was transferred to Southern Air Force for the 14th. We lived houses, we lived at Almont Park, where the house picked up in life. But I didn't like to live this way. We had a house in Florida, and I wasn't comfortable with that. And one of the people who worked on me had been tried for me. We came south in 71, came upon Greenwood, and it's like, the others said, "This was heaven compared to what we had in the United States." This was heaven. There's a lot of people come to this town, including my family, because of the quality of life here, because of the safety and the respect and morals of people in this town. I ask you to vote your thoughts. I ask you not to vote your will, but to make a vote, a vote of that person's people.
Thank you. Thank you. As I said before, if you would like to speak, we would certainly recognize you at this time. If you didn't have to take the opportunity to sign up, if you would like to do that. Yes, sir.
Sorry, my first council meeting, so I'm not familiar with the sign-up. My name is Shelley Rowland. My address is 506 East Pasadena Street, here in Greenwood. I would also like to speak on the issue of alcohol in Greenwood. I grew up in Greenwood, graduated high school from Greenwood, never had alcohol here in Greenwood. I went to college in Fayetteville, and actually, alcohol became a very big part of my life for 20 years. So, I have the understanding of the effects of what alcohol can do to somebody, and the bad decisions that people can make. But more importantly, not being able to control alcohol, and once you restart drinking, and that's where my concern comes from, and that's where the concern for my own, I have a 12-year-old daughter and a 15-year-old daughter, that I have concerns for them, mainly because it's not that you can limit alcohol in restaurants, but you can't control what somebody does before they go to a restaurant. Believe me, I've been the guy that had a 12-pack of beer at home, drove drunk to a restaurant, had more alcohol at the restaurant, and ended up home, and put everybody at danger, and I'm very lucky. And only by the grace of God am I, we had to hurt somebody. Also been the person that my best friend and another friend were hit by drunk drivers in high school. So I experienced that, and believe me, to this day, I think back on that quite often. So that's where my concerns lie. I lived in North West Arkansas, and this same type of measure started. Started as a private club. You have to go sign in. Now, if you go looking for a start in law, Benton County is just like Washington County now, and there's no sign-ins anymore. And you can go by the way for an alcohol on every corner and every convenience store now. You know, it went restaurants, private clubs deal, and then it moved on just to restaurants that had alcohol. Now it's in convenience stores, and now it's basically everywhere you go. So, that's where my concerns lie. Take it from somebody that's parents did, and thank goodness I haven't had a drink in four or five years, and I'll continue to be sober in my life, and I bet that's where my concerns lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Anyone else want to speak?
I would.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Bailey, and I'm not really a resident of Greenwood until five years ago. I was a lifelong resident, although most of that time I didn't live here. I was in the military and applied to counter, you know, what some of the reference deals said. I think in my 22 years in the Army, during my youth, losing 16 soldiers, alcohol in vehicles. And the funny thing is, 10 were some close over, or hit by drunk drivers. I remember a post I was at, six mercs, a soldier's committee, six mercs. Three of them were drunk. Alcohol can really create a lot of problems. I know we have in Fort Smith, and I know people drink at home, but not on the roads as much. I think one year in the Army, alcohol fatalities fueled a big deal. Get close tracking, 47% of vehicle fatalities, all types, not just alcohol related, curve between 10 and 2 Friday nights and Saturday nights. You know alcohol related to most of us, as well as some of the other ones, the other 60 hours of the week. And Brother DeHill reminded me of, also, we used to have a triad: Drinking problem, job problem, marriage problem. And you had to fight the drinking problem by working on the other two. It impacted a lot of lives. I know we have alcohol here. I drink. I don't think I'm going to hell if I drink, but I think by getting behind a vehicle and killing someone, I, and you just need to be careful what you bring in here, and be aware that most of your problems, your biggest problems, maybe happening all the time, the various problems, job problems, have 24/7, they'll last for years, but fatalities invariably happen those Friday, Saturday nights. You need to take what you can do to kind of limit it. I'm an accountant like Jim Newcomb, I run some numbers as well. I think Fort Smith has a 4.5% tax. Conway's a 5% on their alcohol sales. I went to, I think we had a guy in T.H.F. Fridays here last time, so I went to this place and actually had a drink. Only one, drunk sake. Thing was about $6.50, the beers were about $4.50. Let's say the average drink price would be $5.50. 5% sales. Five percent sales tax, to raise a million dollars to revenue this town, you'd have to sell three point five million alcohol drinks. To raise a hundred thousand dollars a year, you would need to sell thirty thousand a month. Three drinks for every person in town. I don't think Dr. Burges and any of them would be good on our part. So, I think the revenue may be a little limited. If you do your cost, you know, benefit analysis, I think you're going to find that your costs and your benefits may exceed your benefits. I've talked to several people about this, and a lot of people are against it in part. I know you only heard against tonight, and I'm one of those. But increasingly, from people that are far here, we're not going to chill us. And a lot of people talk about how, you know, about the intersection out there. I'm on the water condition, I'll tell you right now, we're not going to have water sewer out there for at least two more years, at least. I mean, maybe over that. Plenty of time to put this on the two thousand eighteen ballot, but the people side. I think that'd be your smart move, don't get blamed. Because if one of the drunk drivers kills my son, I might as well come here and kick the hell out of us. Okay, I just, I appreciate you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I thank you, Mr. Brown.
I just want to, my name is Wade Dowd, I live in twenty-seven thirty-four, I'm visiting the room in Greenwood. And for the last three years, my wife and I have been involved in a ministry called Southern Recovery, either in Greenwood or in Fort Smith. In that three years, I've heard over a hundred, and maybe up to a hundred and fifty testimonies from people. And these testimonies, they're not, they're not highlights of people's lives, they're the lowest, the lowest parts of their lives. And I, I, I can't tell you what percentage of were alcohol, started with alcohol, but huge percentage of started without alcohol. Started with beer, then went to heartily, grew, and then hit your others, and then turned into murderers for a living. The number of people that I've heard with these testimonies, that it started with liquor, not necessarily with them, but another family member that they lived with, or maybe they were a child, and it happened twenty years ago, and they've been living with this for the last thirty years, and the way they retreated, left them, homeless, or even worse, some of it's so bad I wouldn't. And this is all confidential, so it's, it's all, but the stories I've heard are horrendous. And yes, I know Greenwood, people go to Fort Smith, to hurt beer, liquor, too, Greenwood. But the way I see it, the further we go away, the better out we go. The closer it is, the closer it is, the more accessible it is, it's more accessible a little bit. And, you know, I live back in Greenwood, and I just think of the success we've had, you know, great streets, great cities to live in. I mean, everything, everything we see on Facebook is Greenwood's a second best city for safety, Greenwood's was this, was that, and is alcohol going to help that, or something? Or could it hurt? And I just, I just, I just, I'm just going to ask you to vote this. I'm just going to straight forward, ask you to vote this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think we have a lady, just now. I'll get you.
My name's Katie Jones, not like I changed that word, in many ways. As I'm hearing everyone share about this, it's a picture from another's heart. Oh, you know, every year, coming up on Palm, our police department, our city, I'm not sure if you did lots of exactly what, they have a car, or a couple of cars, sitting out for all of us to be, to remind our kids not to drink too much. I guess my question is, how do we vote yes to let alcohol, when you consider to let alcohol in our town, and still be able to put that out there, to remind our kids not to drink too much? The next thing I would like to say is that, when you vote, when you get ready to vote on this, think about your family. Don't think about yourself. Think about your family. How would you feel if it were your family, your child, your wife, your mother, your father, that was involved in one of these accidents? So that's where we put ourselves aside, and think about it, and that's all I ask you each time we do it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Yes, sir?
Most of y'all know my name by now. I'm sorry if I've offended anybody. That was not my intention. I've opened up a business for Greenwood Arkansas, or opened up a business at all. Most of y'all don't know me person to person. Some of y'all don't do. I respect John Bailey's opinion a lot, a whole lot, when everybody in terms of know that. Had plenty of background conversations at Farming Bank, and I respect that. I'm also a numbers guy, so I'm going to give you some numbers, okay? Spot your, probably your opinion on me. I have pretty strong Judeo-Christian values, and you probably think opposite of that, but it's maybe unfortunate to do. I don't drink at all, folks. So, I'm going to give you a number first, and then I'll give you a little more.
Do what? Do what?
Apologize, Josh Miles heard everybody did it, I'm an alcoholic person. I'm sorry.
What's your address?
Three thirteen Warewood, Greenwood. Well, it's a little bit of my house, by the way. Okay, so, the population of Crawford County is sixty-one thousand seven hundred and three statistically, two thousand fifteen, okay? The population of Sebastian County is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty, two thousand fifteen. Sure these numbers have shifted a little bit, because everybody wants to move to Greenwood and act, and can't wait. So, if it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty people in Sebastian County, that means in Fort Smith, we roughly have a number of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three, okay? So roughly, there's about fifty thousand more people in Sebastian County outside Fort Smith. I mean, we're ten thousand short of the whole Crawford County, okay? Bear with me, I'm flipping here. In two thousand fourteen, University Arkansas study found alcohol sales would have brought an estimated income of five point eight million dollars in the county of Crawford County. Researchers from the university used data from two thousand, two thousand, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen to come up with the amount of estimated Crawford County residents would spend an average of a hundred and ninety-four dollars per person on beer, and a hundred and sixty-two dollars per person on liquor and wine. And folks realize, that's not everybody, because not everybody drinks beer, not everybody drinks liquor. I'm not necessarily, I'm not in those numbers in Sebastian County, because I don't care According to the study in two thousand fifteen, there would have been fifteen point five billion in buying beer, liquor, and wine sales in Crawford County, which have generated an additional two point four percent in sales tax revenue, bringing five hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars in county and city sales tax. Now that means that not everybody's coming to Greenwood to buy beer. I get that, okay? Sebastian County is just right below Wright Hills, so probably odds are they're going to Fort Smith before they come to Greenwood, okay? So those numbers are priced to you by about eighteen percent. Additionally, the study estimated that lifting the alcohol ban would create an additional seventy-six local jobs with a labor income of two point three million. Kevin Holmes is a spokesperson for the group, keeps dollars in Crawford County, which is trying to get the issue of the next ballot, something that hasn't happened in more than seventy years. Crawford County has been so behind for so long, and this is just kind of one of the last hurdles that we think is hurdling bank, uh, back local city and county government, Chamber of Commerce, from getting some big businesses here. Holmes said, big business like liquor stores that according, please understand, I don't know what it's for here. Uh, big business like liquor stores that according to the state could generate nearly six million dollars every year, which Holmes said would help in improvements. It allows the counties, uh, you know, to get revenue to improve the roads, improve the rural fires, improve the police department, Holmes said. Crawford County Judge John Hall said, "An official economic study has never been done before. I've seen people come up with estimates because they just guessed it, make someone kind, some kind of number, but as far as an actual study, I've never seen it," Hall said. Judge Hall said, "At this point, he's not sure which side of the study will benefit." "I'm sure the dry side will say it's not worth it," Hall said. "If it's a real, real high number, I'm sure the wet side will say, 'Look, what we can do with the tax money.'" But Holmes said, "The study shows that the county is missing out, look, we're missing out on by not having Crawford County having liquor sales." Now there's your statistic numbers, okay? Legitimes, done by the U of A, not some guesstimation, okay? The next thing I want to say is, where I'll talk about accidents, liquor accidents, I get it, okay? I wouldn't want anybody having a DUI accident, I don't care if it's my mother, my brother, your sister, your cousin, that's horrific, okay? There's no excuse for it, okay? But statistically, and I'm going to put myself in the podium here, more people die from obesity than they do from DUI accidents, okay? More people, people die from heart attacks than they do from DUI accidents, okay? You are more, this is statistically proven, you're more likely to do your own research, okay? You are more apt to get in an accident, driving further and further and further, if you're drinking, driving, okay? So, if I'm not able to go buy a local beer at a local sports car, and I, I encourage, even if you don't want to buy anything there, I encourage you to walk into that place. Folks, it's family friendly. I had six families in there, not with two kids, and mom and dad. It's family friendly, okay? Had multiple Facebook reviews over the past weekend, it's family friendly. There's not a bar in there, there never will be a bar in there. I don't want that. I don't, I don't want that for, for our city. But I understand that beer sales, liquor sales, and all that kind of stuff, do bring taxes in, okay? So, all these things kill people, okay? Including DUI accidents, okay? Including all that stuff. But if statistically, the further somebody drives, they're going to get in an accident, okay? So bam, first, the closest place they're going to go to watch a ballgame is Beefo Brady's, okay? I like going to Beefo Brady's. They got some good food, okay? They got plenty of TVs. Why not? But if that's the closest place they drive, is Beefo Brady's, to have three beers or whatever they're doing, okay? And so bam, we get in our car, we didn't drink too much, we get to drive all the way to Greenwood. So the further we drive, what's going to happen? I'm going to get more impaired, more impaired, more impaired, more impaired, the further I drive. So by the time I hit Center Street, what's going to happen? I'm more impaired, I'm more impaired, I'm more impaired, so I won't have to get in an accident, okay? If somebody is goofy enough to drink five beers at their house, which they are, okay? And then comes up to Game Day Sports Car, and does have two, two beers, that's almost to the point that they shouldn't be driving, okay? My, my staff can be traced to the point of recognizing this, but if they didn't recognize this, and it did happen, okay? Statistically, okay, this is stuff that universities do for a living, okay? They're safer driving into their house, from my location, than for Beefo Brady's, okay? So statistically, if you're wanting to keep your town safe from drunk drivers, then you would want it here. Because if you don't want to keep your town from being safe from drunk drivers, then you wouldn't want it here, you wanted people to go to Beefo Brady's. Hands down, that's the proven facts, okay? So, there's your numbers, okay? Now, I'm going to get on the whole Christian category, okay?
Mr. Brown, sorry to interrupt you, but I do need to hold you to probably one more minute, but I didn't actually announce, we usually hold it about three minutes.
That's around sixty seconds I can handle. From a Christian category, your, your, the, your, your point of going out is to what? Reap the harvest. Am I not correct? Yes or no? In hands? Yep? Okay? So, your point is to reap the harvest. So, let's hypothetically say the table over here at Game Day Sports Car is a group of heathens, that went out to about three o'clock in the morning, they got drunk, and Bay Hall says it's twelve-thirty on Sunday morning, okay? They're still a little hungover, but they're safe to drive. Bam, this table over here, it's a group of Christians, and they just had an awesome service in whatever church you want to go to, talking about the spirit of God, the love of God, and all that kind of stuff, okay? So bam, out of the group of heathens, one person heard the Christians speak about church, spoke about God, spoke about the love of God, maybe they'd never heard before, okay? So at that point in time, who was the Christian? Planted a seed, and that what happens when you plant a seed, and you begin watering the seed? The seed begins to rise up, right? Okay? At that point in time, boom, if I planted a seed, and it begins to water, it begins to rise up, I then planted a seed, I then, then you have one church member. So if your job is to reap the harvest, and you did that by going in there and having a burger and having a drink, then boom, you did, did your job as a Christian. Absolutely the facts. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Kimberly Brown. I live at, I'm home in ninety-six. My husband's a counselor. My son is dead. November eighteenth is the anniversary of his death. And I get it, it, this is difficult. It's hard to balance, somebody wanting to have a business with someone's business affecting us personally. A drunk driver killed my son, hit him. So this is personal. And maybe someday we'll be ready for alcohol if ever in the city of Greenwood, but we're not ready today. I don't know when that day is coming, and it might come ten, twenty years, five years, but the city's not ready yet. And I think until the citizens get ready, the answer is no. We don't have ordinance, we don't have rules in place for how we want to tax it, or how they want to monitor it. I'm not judgmental. I get it, you have a good business, then you're a businessman, and this is difficult. These people aren't voting on whether or not we want alcohol, they're voting on whether or not to allow you to apply. That's all they're voting on. It's the citizens that have to decide that they want this. The vote yes was to give you guys and myself an opportunity to speak out, and we're doing that. It's hard for you guys not to make it personal when I hear you say things about how they need to vote and be a man. These men are men. My, my, death of my son is not over. I have to go every year to the parole board to beg them to keep that man in prison who murdered my son. There was nothing left of him. So, I'm asking you to vote no, not because I never want to see alcohol in our community, but because we're not ready to alcohol. And this gives us a chance to, to decide as a community how we want this to go. And I'm asking you to vote no, not just for granted, but for most of them who didn't drink, and was killed, a drunk driver on his way to work in the morning, not at night, not on a Saturday or a Friday, but on his way to work. Someone was driving down the wrong side of the road. And my nightmare's not over, and I don't want anybody in our community to go through what AC and I go through every day. November eighteenth is the day, but it's every day for us. And I get it, it's just hard, and I don't regret anybody for their vote, but this is hard. So I ask you to vote no for now, because I'm not ready. I'm not ready, and I don't think anybody else is either.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Jeff Toll, and I'm presently the president of that golf course here in Greenwood, and I just want to bring some clarity to the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight. I just wanted everybody to know that I'm not seeking this ordinance from my own personal establishment. I'm strictly here talking on the, on behalf of the golf course, and how alcohol sales would look like and be like at our country club. I want you to know that this would be strictly limited to our members, and that we, we would Discussion?
I would say that I, I think that's, the reason why we do it this way, if we have three readings, is to get the word out and make things public, and here, everybody's viewpoint on it, and I appreciate everyone being here tonight and giving their comments, and I hope that everybody's voice is heard.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Motion is on.
Thank you.
Please, are you making a motion, please, for second reading? Uh, yes, sir.
Is that a motion in the second by Mr. Brown, Ripley? I'll say it, second.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
No.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. Number two, which is number five, city attorney again.
That is the same exact ordinance for right of, with the exception of, if you'd like to do the country club, and Mr. Toll, I say that correctly? Toll? For the same thing, so this will be the first reading, I have no, I'll make it a move.
Thank you. Motion in the second?
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
No.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. Number two, which is number five, city attorney again.
That is the same exact ordinance for right of, with the exception of, if you'd like to do the country club, and Mr. Toll, I say that correctly? Toll? For the same thing, so this will be the first reading, I have no, I'll make it a move.
Thank you. Motion in the second?
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
No.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. Number two, which is number five, city attorney again.
That is the same exact ordinance for right of, with the exception of, if you'd like to do the country club, and Mr. Toll, I say that correctly? Toll? For the same thing, so this will be the first reading, I have no, I'll make it a move.
Thank you. Motion in the second?
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
No.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you.
You ready?
Yes, number, number three, which was number five, I'm sorry, is that right? No, number thirteen, which was number thirteen, Calvin Powell.
Okay. It would seem like my ordinance would be moved, and like I said, it seemed to become the spokesman for it, I seem to become the spokesman for planning. You know, there's, there's a lot of passion, this is the second time this has come out, and there's a lot of passion. There's actually, I think, less people here than there were the first time, when me and you sat on the council. And I'm afraid as time goes along, there'll be less and less people, there'll be a point where planning should be in place. I'm, so it seems like at this point it'd be a moving point, but I think it may be that we should go ahead and consider putting planning in place. I've got a combination of what I said I would bring forward last time with me and Mr. Niles, when it's such a heated argument about my planning, and I think this is the best time, when everything is off the table, now's the time to plan, and reasonable heads will prevail. My, what I brought forward, it may seem somewhat discouraging from these things from happening, but it's what I'm proposing, and I've done what I said I'd do. I've put in there a current state maximum for taxation, somewhat heavy fees, and I've directed those fees away from the prerogative of the city council, and so it would go straight to the partner recognition. So, if y'all would like, we can start at the top. I've, I've talked to, I visited with four, four different attorneys on this. On the opening, it says, "An ordinance establishing permitting process and privilege permit for selling and dispensing any controlled beverage within the city of Greenwood by business of the state is to sell alcohol-based beverages, levying permit fees and city supplemental tax of 10% on beer and 14% on wine and mixed drinks, upon the annual grocery receipts which are derived there from repealing an ordinance in complex statutes and conditions violations of these provisions and for other purposes." This is a copy from Conway's. Conway's in a similar situation we are, where I counted right there. Conway's was at 5%, which John Bailey mentioned, and I called Don Zimmerman with the municipal league, and I asked him, I said, "This is what I want to do." I said, "This is something I'm not necessarily for, I voted against it, but it did pass, and I kind of took it upon myself to start some planning, because if it's going to pass, I want to have a plan." Now, obviously, it hadn't passed this time, but it passed the first time. So, he, he went through state law with me, and he determined that the state max on beer would be 10%, and the state max on mixed drinks would be 14%. So, in that opening, it's exactly the way Conway wrote it, except I put the state max on beer and state max on wine. Also, throughout, as I visited with Jason Carter, as y'all know, he's city attorney of North Little Rock, and he was, you know, we grew up together. And then I also visited with Michael Harriet at ABC, and he's their attorney for ABC, right?
Correct.
And then I visited with, obviously, with Michael. Now, in going through all this, I think at the very end, Mike needs to look over it, because I visited with these people on the phone, and they've not seen a document but get it. So, if you go down through it, did y'all go through it line by line?
I, I will say that I visited with, they would show me through this reading, where I, where I have the beer permission, the gas card.
If you go on down, I'll tell you what I've changed from what the city of Conway had. It goes on, you're talking about permit, you're giving definitions, there's a definition of supplemental privilege permit and the supplemental privilege permit fee. Now, I've adjusted that. If you go down on page two, supplemental privilege permit fee, this is written, up to this point, is written exactly the way Conway had. "Fee established by the city of Greenwood for the privilege of operating a private club within the city, there is hereby levy, levy an annual supplemental privilege permit fee in the amount of $1,500, or $50 for nonprofit 501(c)(3). Conway's was $50. I've obviously raised it, $1,450. I think by doing that, and this is renewable in addition to your privilege license, so when a business comes into Greenwood, you have to buy a privilege license and be able to operate. So, a private, a private club would now have to buy supplemental privilege license of $1,500, unless you're a 501(c)(3."
I'm sorry, we have. We had any?
I have, yes, I have the coordinates for planning taxation establishment permitting process for businesses that's had like this.
That's number fourteen. Calvin Powell. Sorry.
Would we like to add to the top of business?
Oh, yeah, we'll need to move that up. Okay.
Any other?
That would be, that would be number three. So let's, let's make, uh, number two, one whole business, number one. You will. Uh, number five, number two.
You're going to be number five?
No, no, you would be number three.
Okay.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be the third alcohol issue discussion. Okay. Just give them all a time to each, please focus. Okay. Thank you for that. So, uh, the other agenda additions that we did not catch at this point or this time, or part of it. Are we clear on the, on where we are? Okay. So we'll move right into, uh, I guess do we need to do whole business? Is it, do we need to start with number, number one? Number two, which is, yes, number two has city attorney ordinance operating just now is to apply for private club permit second reading.
I'm not sure how I elected to leave speaker for this, but, uh, I prepared the coordinates as requested. Uh, this was, uh, okay by the ABC actually in the direction of the ABC and they were satisfied with the most powerful. Put it off the first reading, but had it all advised above and it's on for second reading.
Discussion.
I would say that I, I think that's, uh, the reason why we do it this way, if we have three readings is to get the word out and make things public. And, uh, here, everybody's viewpoint on it, and so I appreciate everyone being here tonight and, and giving their comments. And I hope that was, everybody's voice is heard.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Second.
Make the motion, please, respect the reading.
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion in a second by Mr. Brown, Ripley? I'll say it. Say it.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Let us Terry. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you. Uh, number two, which is number five. Uh, city attorney again.
That is the same exact coordinates for right of, with the exception of the likes of the Catholic Club and Mr. Toll. I said it correctly. Toll. Oh. For the second thing, so this will be the first reading by Household.
I'll make the movie.
Thank you. A motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Let us Terry.
No.
Dr. Taylor.
Thank you. Yes, number, number three, which was number five, I'm sorry, is that right? No, number thirteen, Calvin Powell.
Okay, uh, it would seem like my ordinance would be moved. And like I said, he seemed to become the spokesman for it, I seem to become the spokesman for planning. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of passion, this is the second time this has come out, and there's a lot of passion. There's actually, I think, less people here than there were the first time, when me and you sat on the council. And I'm afraid as time goes along, there'll be less and less people. There'll be a point where planning should be in place. Uh, I'm, uh, so it seems like at this point it'd be a moving point, but I think it may be that we should go ahead and consider putting planning in place. Uh, I've got a combination of what I said I would bring forward last time with me and Mr. Niles, when it's such a heated argument, uh, about my planning, uh, and I think this is the best time. When everything is off the table, now's the time to plan and reasonable heads will prevail. My, what I brought forward, uh, it may seem somewhat discouraging from these things from happening, but, uh, it's, uh, what I'm proposing and, I've done what I said I'd do, I've, uh, put in there a current state maximum for taxation, uh, somewhat, uh, heavy fees, and I directed those fees away from the prerogative of the city council, and so it would go straight to the partner commission. So, if y'all would like, we can start at the top. I've, I've talked to, uh, I visited with four, four different attorneys on this. On the opening, it says, "An ordinance establishing permitting process and privilege permit for selling and dispensing any controlled beverage within the city of Greenwood Business, stated to sell alcoholic beverages, levying permit fees and city supplemental tax of ten percent on beer and fourteen percent on wine and mixed drinks. Upon the annual gross receipts which are derived there from repealing an ordinance in complex statutes and conditions violations of these provisions and for other purposes." This is a copy from Conway's. Conway's in a similar situation we are, there I counted. Conway's was at five percent, which John Bailey mentioned. And I called Don Zimmerman with, with the municipal league, and I asked him, I said, "This is what I wanted to do." I said, "This is something I'm not necessarily for, I voted against it, but it did pass." And I kind of took it upon myself to start some planning, because if it's gonna pass, I wanna have a plan. Uh, now, obviously, it hadn't passed this time, but it passed the first time. So, uh, he, he went through state law with me, and he determined that the state max on beer would be ten percent and the state max on mixed drinks would be fourteen percent. So, in that opening, it's exactly the way Conway wrote it, except I put the state max on beer and state max on wine. Uh, also, throughout, as I visited with Jason Carter, as y'all know, he's, uh, city attorney of North Little Rock, and he was, uh, uh, you know, we grew up together. And then I also visited with Michael Harry at ABC, and, uh, he's their attorney for ABC, right?
Correct.
And then I visited with, obviously, with Michael. Now, in going through all this, I think at the very end, Mike needs to look over it, because I visited with these people on the phone, and they've not seen a document but get it. So if you go down through it, did y'all go through it line by line?
I, I will say that I visited with David Shaw and with Miss Marie, where, uh, where our, their vehicle issue.
If you go on down, um, I'll tell you what I've changed from what the city of Conway had. Uh, it goes on, you're talking about permit, you're giving definitions, uh, there's a definition of supplemental privilege permit and the supplemental privilege permit fee. Now, I've adjusted that. If you go down on page two, supplemental privilege permit fee. This is written, up to this point, is written exactly the way Conway had. Uh, "Fee established by the city of Greenwood for the privilege of operating a private club within the city. Here's hereby levy, levy an annual supplemental privilege permit fee in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars, or fifty dollars for nonprofit five oh one C groups." Conway's was fifty dollars. I've obviously raised it, one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. I think by doing that, and this is, this is renewable in addition to your privilege license, so when a business comes into Greenwood, you have to buy a privilege license and be able to operate. So, a private, a, uh, private club would now have to buy supplemental privilege license of fifteen hundred dollars. Unless you're a five oh one C three. I tell you, I don't, I didn't really have, this app was added, it was not in Conway's. Uh, only thing I thought of is maybe, uh, five oh one C three being maybe the Elks Foundation, or maybe the Bell Park Foundation that wanted to have something where they were trying to do a fundraiser, I don't know, and I could strike that. Then we'll go on to section three. You don't think I was too out of line with the fifteen hundred dollars, because I was really toying with two thousand. So if y'all think I was low, I agree with you.
Well, I think that if, uh, if you're, for me, I'd say if you're gonna put in there, if you're gonna sell alcohol, it should be a matter of if it's profit or nonprofit, it should be the same fee.
So you think I would scratch the five oh one C three? Are you okay with the fifteen hundred dollar permit fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do, all, do, does everybody kind of agree with that, see, that the five oh one C three should be stripped?
I don't know.
All right. Now, fifteen hundred dollars would be renewable every year, so you can see just by having a pretty steep privilege permit fee that's renewable every year, you've kind of gotten rid of your dimes and just your small joints, I guess. Uh, so if we go down to section three, I'm gonna scratch the fifty dollars for the five oh one C three line. Uh, permits required, that's exactly the way Conway had theirs, to have a passion process for a permit. So it goes down and talks about when you can apply for it, it has to be bought at the first of the year. If you'll go over to page three, on G, "The city of Conway preferred Arkansas State's Arkansas Code." What does ACA stand for? Okay. So they returned to three dash nine dash two two three, which is what gives cities all the rights to do what we're doing. It said that, uh, all money can be used for general purposes. Well, I've amended it, and, uh, I've taken out that all cities can be used for general purposes, and if you'll see at the last sentence, "All revenues collected will be budgeted and appropriated for activities that benefit youth and youth parks related purposes by the Greenwood Park and Recreation Commission." Uh, that was added, obviously.
Let's talk about that.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that, if that's what we all get. Just like this ordinance, I mean, to Ms. Brown's point, we need to be prepared, we need to have a plan, and it needs to allow outlast all of us. And to that point, to outlast all of us, I think the council controls the money, and the money ought to go into the general fund for their use. If, if we wanted to somehow label that it goes towards youth and youth activities or, you know, whatever, but I think the council should control funds. Think of that, bro. I mean, this may, this, this ordinance may never come into play for the next five years.
Sure.
And, you know, none of us may be set to know when it happens, so, you know, as state law exists today, the council controls the money, so I think we should write the ordinance again that says, the council controls the money. These people have to elect people that spend their money wisely, so.
And ultimately, we still approve the partner commissions, but.
Yeah.
So money can be appropriated, but I don't see this town developed for this, that, and that's, we've got too many other entities in the city that suffer from short call anyway. If some of that money can be used for that, that's what should be done, I mean, not just, I just, um, I'm a Daniel, I, I think that money ought to be controlled by the group that sets up here, and they dictate where it goes, not just.
I mean, twenty years from now, you may be generating twenty million dollars in revenue, and you don't want to, you know, break that money out.
Yeah, I do want to go with you.
You may ain't gonna be here, though.
So if we just left it all fees, taxes, penalties, and stopped after pursuit of the ACA, and just let that last sentence out.
For general purposes.
For general purposes.
Yes, true.
And then I go, you know, I'm, you're not putting it all towards parks and youth and what happened to that, uh, I don't think, hurts any things, leave it out. I see us paint ourselves a corner. There's been times when we've had money in place one day or another, and it's been difficult for us, because what it needed has been to other places.
It's not that you paint yourself in a corner permanently, it's just you take three months to change it. So it wouldn't be a knee jerk reaction where we go, "Hey, we're gonna go rob that money coming in from alcohol sales to buy a new police car." It's gonna be a tough decision, and you're gonna raise some eyebrows when you go back and spend three months. You're okay with it?
Well, I am okay with it. I think this is, I think this is a long ways down the road, we're talking about putting this on for first reading by Household.
Yeah.
Which gives us.
Say this is the first time you've seen.
Which gives us three months to sort through.
You've got three more months to look at.
Yeah, we're gonna make that.
I mean, I think traditionally, as a council, one of the things we've done well has been thoughtful, and we planned, and I think that's part of why this issue didn't pass tonight, is because we're all, we want to put our best foot forward, you got a good council, there's time for us to work through this. Uh, I don't know if we have to flesh out the power today for tonight, and the meeting is already pretty long, I.
It's not gonna take three months to strike it out. It's not gonna take three months to strike that out. We just worked on that in some web letter, though.
This big book here, three nine two two three. Uh, item two says, "All fees and taxes levied here under by the city or county shall be used for city or county general purposes or for city or county economic development purposes."
Y'all want to read like that?
The youth is, parks is a city purpose. And this was a Zimmerman question, the director, Mr. Look, and this lady, I asked him, and I go ahead and put this directly in the ordinance where this money passes through parks, and he said, "Yes." If you want to put it in the ordinance, and then.
Well, you're gonna, you know, are you then going to go to parks and somehow regulate that the park chooses it for youth? You know what I mean? I understand that.
Yeah, because I called it out, that it has to be used for youth activities. General purposes. Well, I, I can count the votes, and it looks like I'm out, so.
All right.
We're just putting it off the first reading by Household. Yeah, I mean, we don't.
So if I left it in, if I get it off the first reading?
I will tell you, I'm wanting to vote for that.
All right, I'm scratching.
What other, what other time box you got?
I've got two.
Hey, Rod, can I go back to?
Y'all just touched my biggest one, though.
In your title, what is it, where was that, sir? Very top, it talks about annual, annual gross receipts.
You talking about the very top?
Yeah. That this percentage will be derived there from, uh, excuse me, on the annual gross receipts. Derived there from. Next to that page talks about, uh, the same. In, yes, eight four, great, uh, based upon annual gross receipts, that then item C says that we're gonna collect that monthly.
Where are you at?
Eighteen, four, eighteen.
Section eighteen, four, C. I think your title reads to say that, uh, the percent tax would be levied on a monthly basis. Based upon monthly receipts.
So I need to amend the title.
It reads that it's what gonna tax your annual growth.
They don't want to say this, you know, one's, one's growth, annual, that's a month.
Well, we need to keep it monthly, because we're picking it up.
In the title, and then eighteen, four. And Mr. Amy, agree?
We're, we're changing it to top of the month, because that's how we're at.
Yeah.
I need to say another plate of morals, but, but the city says.
All right, so we're gonna fix the title, this is what I got some part. We're scratching out the fifty dollars for the five oh one C three. We're scratching out youth administered by Greenwood Park and Recreation. All right.
Did, do you want to change to what F two, what you read?
We can just leave it for S U R T, right?
You just scratched that last sentence. "All revenues collected will be budgeted and appropriated for activities that benefit youth and youth parks related purposes by the Greenwood Parks Commission." I only scratched out section eighteen and number C two, right? Eighteen.
Are you, it has the same language, Parks Commission, it's bottom, eighteen C.
Eighteen C says the same thing as the.
In reverse, it's on the Parks Commission.
Okay, so that, yes, we'll take out that line. So if we go to eighteen, eight four, C. Go to eighteen, eight four, C.
We got blast it.
All, all four mentioned, "Revenues collected will be budgeted and appropriated for activities that benefit youth and youth parks related purposes by the Greenwood Parks Commission," you scratched that.
We're scratching fifty dollars.
We're scratching the fifty dollars on three.
Where, where's the privilege permit?
Well, it wasn't, it was going to parks, now it's going to.
Do we have to specify that, is one of those where it goes?
Why don't we just put that?
When I scratched that, it's, it's carried, "All fees, taxes, and penalties received by the city pursuant to this chapter will be used for general purposes within the city of Greenwood pursuant to ACA three dash nine dash two two three." So G covers that. All right. So you want to go back, you want to go back to where I've added other things?
Somewhere around section five.
Can we, can we, may I, can we just start at the beginning and go through?
We're, we're back.
No, you bounced back to four several times.
Oh, really?
Okay.
All right, so.
We're on section five?
Yeah, we're on section five.
We'll skip it over, a few things I added.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, you want to just skip that?
No, no, I want you to.
We're not, no, we're not done.
Okay, so.
I want you to start at the beginning, and so section, uh, from item H.
We're, we're back for it, item H. That is, city of Conway's language, "Permits, permits shall be transcribed or signed unless until approved is granted alcohol. That's pretty standard. I, I don't may not like. No permit will be issued for an establishment that is less than two thousand feet of a school, church, daycare, youth activities organization, alcoholic synonymous, alcoholic synonymous meaning place, alcoholic, narcotic dependency center, without prior approval from the city council. Approval may be revoked for any cause at any time." So two thousand feet, one mile is. So we're talking about about a third of a mile. I like the two thousand feet. You can, with the council vote, you know, give someone permission to be somewhere else within that?
Is there, because I missed out last week, everybody knows what you had to work, but we talked at some point, it's been talked about, pitching some of this, and it's back to zoning, try to look at where you can zone things, have alcohol, where you can zone things, invite them to a club. I'm sorry to work a little bit. If we, is this, we're gonna wait and see where, because, I love me, that's a zoning issue.
Well, I don't mean to dare say, so, the city attorney of Little Rock, Jason Carter, I interviewed him, he recommended that we did not. He said, "You kind of lock yourself in on zoning, zoning takes a long time to change." He said, "You might, at some point, there may be an idea that you want to have flexibility on it, it's just the city council." The city council is gonna be the organization that allows it to go forward today, you see, so the city council should be in the driver's seat and say, "You know what? Even though, uh, this was not, you know, it's not currently what your plan for the permit had, if they go forward, uh, I'm not opposed. You know, I originally wanted to kick it to zone, I wanted to have it all zone." I kind of agree with Jason, uh, what he mentioned about zoning being difficult to change, difficult to institute. He said, "Just ride it in," and that's what has been done there with that.
That door to door, that pro class, around the whole street feet, linear foot, road, and there's a million variances to that two thousand.
As pro class, just two thousand feet.
And, and basically, someone would ask basically us for a variance if we were inside that two thousand.
So you're at eighteen hundred feet, and the council says, "Yeah, that's a pretty good place, we'll allow that." Take a vote, and then the voters report in the minutes of the meeting, and Charlotte writes a permit, and she refers to the vote, and they go forward.
Are two thousand what they have, Rod, did you say, according?
No, I've added to that.
What's your opinion of the two thousand?
I just like two thousand.
He didn't use two thousand.
I don't make it, I, my choice zones. And that's our rule, we're not gonna put it in these places, in that supersede.
You can't put it in a non-commercial area, it's gonna have to be.
But you can still zone.
There's no place currently in the city limits of Greenwood that's not two thousand foot from where all those things existed.
So we would pretty much have to weigh in on every single one.
The Swiss Way Annex Outdoors.
Yeah, the council would pretty much have to weigh in on every single one.
Which would have to be.
Which you have to levy on permit. But, this is a guideline, when somebody comes in and said, because like Jason said, "You're gonna have somebody in here every month." And he said, "All the, all of the first meeting may be very passionate," and you look, we board it to death, and they start walking out. He said, "The first meeting may be passionate," he said, "The second meeting may be less," and then the third meeting, and now you got everybody coming in, wanting to open, going up, running out of their zootage trail. And he said, "You know, you need to be able to hand them a, you need to be able to hand them something," and they, this is the guideline.
Right.
And they go, "Man, I'm not paying fifteen hundred dollars a year for this, and I'm not collecting all these taxes, and I'm not two thousand, more than two thousand feet from a church, daycare, or school, youth activities organization, I'm not two thousand feet, forget it," and they walk off. And then there's going to be some people who say, "Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna invest a lot of money here, and it makes a lot of sense, and I'm gonna go give it a shot."
What is it, a comment?
I don't have any.
I don't have it.
You had it?
I've added that. I would like to add J. Yeah? J was also a recommendation from, uh, the city attorney of Little Rock. Everybody needs to submit a business plan, that business plan needs to be kept with the permit. And then when they step out of line, and they vary from their business plan, which you read and you accepted, uh, you just do not renew their permit the following year, or you revoke it. So that goes back to my argument at the last meeting, are, what are we, are we, are we tasses or no tasses? You know, well.
I should've been here if there were tasses, you know.
We're, we're no tasses, and, and if that comes into the business plan, and then you go down there and there's tasses, you say, "Buddy, we're, we're gonna have to..." Next meeting, you put it on agenda, and we're revoking your permit, you've lost your fifteen hundred dollars, and you'll never get one again.
We already have ordinances for tasses.
Still, I, I believe a business plan must be presented and accepted. So I would like to add J, do y'all have a problem with me adding J?
No.
Okay, let's go on to section three. And, and y'all, uh, my I stands as presented, right? My two thousand feet?
Well, we can grant a variance, you have to do it.
You look at the last sentence, without, with, you know, with prior approval from the city council. And approval may be revoked for any cause at any time.
If that's what it was at Little Rock, it turns out by the way, five hundred feet.
Little Rock's all the way, it didn't matter.
But even if four, you can't sell, you can't buy liquor, you can't buy beer at the, uh, one of Walmart's. Yeah, you can't, right? Because it's too far from the school, so how, how far does sports get to that, you know?
Uh, like with Michael Harry, another lawyer I talked to, you know, it's all different. So, uh, on, on private clubs, he said, "There is no distance requirement, that's totally up to the municipality." He said, "That's why we have to approve it first, he said, "We're looking for direction from the municipality."
With liquor stores and.
Liquor stores.
That's governed by the state.
That's governed by the state. He said, uh, marijuana dispensaries, they've got distances on them, they've got distances of other things, but on this, what we're looking at, he said, "There are no distances between, for, uh, uh, anything." It's, he said, you know, "No distance from church," he said, "It could share space with the church." So what we're saying is municipality, us, we're not going to, two thousand feet unless we give prior approval.
Hey, Rod? On further review, I would.
Hey, Rod, I'll call for the review, I wouldn't want to strike in the very last part of I, where approval may be revoked for any cause at any time. One, I don't feel like we'll record a whole lot, trying to pull that off, and two, I think the state regulates. If there's something that we think is grotesque enough to revoke the license for a private club, I believe the state will already pull the trigger on that.
Mayor, can I say something? It sounds to me like...
That was the council making sure, you guys are okay.
Can I say something? Sounds to me like what, what the council is entering in here is planning zoning and variances, and to me, that's kind of a planning board adjustment type of function.
Would you...
We could, we could make a statement that says we don't want the two thousand feet
of set areas, and that should supersede zoning. Right? You could, you could, you still zone it and say, we can't be putting here this commercial zone, and y'all listen where you put it.
My suggestion is, for y'all to draw this up, present it to the planning, and then bring it back to, to the council for approval, you know, that way we'll have, the board adjustments will have guidelines that says if, if it meets these guidelines, then, you know, the zoning is correct. But if it doesn't, then, you know, we would have to get a variance, and then you would have to approve the variance.
Except for a steel barn in Forest Hill subdivision, y'all ever get crowds like this in the... Okay, what? Except for a steel barn in Forest Hill, y'all ever get crowds like this in the planning section? Really?
Yeah, I'm trying to put a new place on, uh, what?
Let's do this, um...
Reason I say that is because this is solely a council function of granting or disallowing private club licenses to go on in the city. So it's a hundred percent our job to make up the rules on what we think the taxes should go to, how they should be levied, where they should be.
Exactly.
So, and, I appreciate the fact that the, the justice board adjustments and the commission and whatever you mentioned has some input, were probably pretty good, but a lot of stuff comes out of there that we don't want anything about, and they say, I don't know if there's a building going up, and we're not comfortable, well, they have heard the planning commission meeting.
Well, and the thing that the planning commission board of adjustments have to take into consideration when we come up with something that is a, uh, that we have these large crowds, that they have to look at the fact that we've got twenty people here as a large crowd, but we're making a decision that affects nine thousand five hundred people. And so that's the way I, I try to get my planning commission board adjustments, don't, don't just make your decision based on the fact that somebody shows up with pitforks in Greenwood. You have to think about the future of Greenwood and planning, and does it meet, uh, the, the ordinances in, in place right now? And, you know, just like you keep talking about the, the building out there, you have to get past everything in our ordinances, and then something.
Not you all, I'm talking about the guy with the other building.
Oh, yeah, the one that's one that covers RV, yeah, and, and see, that did not...
Right.
Uh, meet our, uh, ordinances, when he asked for variance, we turned him down, and, you know, the, the crowd that was here had legitimate two, uh, reasons, plus they have covenants that also backed them up. We can, we can, uh, we can approve things with our ordinances, but their covenants would supersede it if they wanted to buy it. And so that's kind of the claim on this. But like I said, it, it just sounded like, you know, what we're doing here, y'all are talking about planning, you're talking about zoning, you're talking about, uh, variances.
Sonny, uh, I, what I'd like to do is continue on, and see where the council feels.
I just wanted to...
I'd like to put on the first reading, but then, whatever passes, I would like for you to take it and put on the planning commission's agenda, and particularly look at section four out of mine.
Really, just that? Just that, what I'm talking about.
And then we want to know what y'all think of section four out of mine, and what changes y'all would like to see in section four.
That's great, you know, I just, I just don't want you to leave that process out.
No, we don't want to leave the process out, so we want you to take it, take a look at section four out of mine, and, and bring back y'all's suggestions, and we'll just accept them and...
Okay.
Okay, so, can we move on to file?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, right to inspect records, basically that, that says in first state law that we have a right to go in and inspect, inspect our records, that we did that with a, a and B commission, it's the same, same situation. Uh, qualifications, all this is Conway's, if we go through section seven, unless you have a problem, section eight, I'll skip it. Uh, the only thing that was changed, Charlotte, where did we put that you had to pay the water office? And not you? That was, that's not in seven, right? Uh, section nine, I've, I've changed nothing. Section ten, I've changed nothing from Conway's, do you have any problems with it? Section eleven, section twelve, nothing.
I want to see where you paid water office.
Um, yeah, why? Charlotte changed it on me and just told me about it, and I didn't remember where it was.
Yeah, it said, if former state county clerk, I don't collect money.
Okay, it's on.
I take the money to the bank, and the water office collects all.
Four and C, so...
It needed to be changed because it's been off my...
On section eighteen, A, three, we've attached fifty dollars for nonprofit Title One C three. Uh, if you go down to C, section four C, this is exactly like Conway's, with the exception, exception, A would be four, ten percent on mixed streams, that max, ten percent on...
Water office also, right?
Ten percent on beer supply.
C's also the water office.
And C's the water office, that's different where it's paid than Conway's.
I don't think you need that sentence, Rod, I don't think you need to say where it's received, it's paid in the city of Greenwood.
That's fine, I can come in and ask where it is, and I'll point them over there, but it's just clear where they, where they go, okay? It doesn't mean they're not checking the water office.
Yeah, I don't think I can change what's taken.
Um, the water department, so, but all collections be there, and that's why we'll have her water office.
You don't like paying water office?
No.
You wanted it repaid with the clerk?
No, I just want to pay it.
You just want to scratch water office.
Okay.
And we'll tell you where it pays when you come in the court.
Okay. So we're scratching received by the city, the city of Greenwood water office?
Just, just the word water office.
Okay, just the word water office.
Two words, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, he makes a good point, if somebody wrote you a check, you don't want a chestnut guy to Greenwood Water Department, you want to make a decision in Greenwood.
You just want to say received by the city, we're just taking out water office.
Yes.
Okay, um, if you turn the page, uh, this is all Conway's, I've changed nothing, all the, all the fines, five hundred dollars, two hundred fifty, that's all from Conway's ordinance. Conway's ordinance was passed in two thousand ten, and it's in effect today. So Charlotte, have you kept up?
Yes.
Changes?
Haven't.
I appreciate all this, Rod.
Does, does any, uh, when Sonny got out, anybody can speak upon this, does anybody, everything said?
I'll do one comment, um, is there anything you can do to limit the hours to not till late at night?
It refers here, yes, and that was something I thought of, did y'all see, it refers to, to the state's hour.
Five, the last page was five, if you're talking about the state, the hour of operation should be in the state statute in Title Three, so we can be more limiting than the state as we want?
Yes.
And the state...
So John, what were you thinking?
What is the state, I don't know what the state has.
Ten o'clock, nine o'clock, right? Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
I mean, it could be early, but I, I was, I was just going to be on ten.
What, what are this, what does the state statute say?
They could sort of bring out the ten.
Can you look it up, Charlie?
Title Three.
Why don't you, I mean, that's something we can research and come back and make some good...
I'll, I'll research, we'll pick it up on the sex reading.
No pressure.
How about...
Is there anything else?
I think Mr. Knobbe on the screen.
I had something I wanted to follow by, there was a set of questions coming out, we can work out here, I'll leave this to you.
Yeah, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, about what the, the, what we know against my ordinance, I have a question, but we can both play, I guess, if that's one.
It, well, it failed.
Good luck.
It failed, are you talking about on your ordinance?
Yes.
It did not pass the sex reading, failed the sex reading.
Catch that question, I got a question, I can just answer this to us.
Can you want to, okay, can I ask you that question now, that's true?
Sure. Um, so, to my understanding, um, so, how many votes do I have to override the council vote?
Uh, I almost did.
I, I have to buy, buy law, I, I have to have a certain percent of votes to override those things, and I just need to know...
I think you're talking about a, that you do.
Because there, in office, there's a lot of laws that change, like pretty often, I have none of your permission, uh, also in office, uh, if I have a certain amount of votes from the city, uh, then I can call for a special vote immediately, not when after late till, uh, voting run.
That's going to be who law, I don't know, there, that's not fair, Michael, sure.
I currently have thirteen hundred seventy-two of your voters, uh, shaking one alcohol, here are my two of the fifteen, uh, it's thirteen hundred seventy-two, few people that probably vote the next time you all go up for election, uh, so, I mean, I have a strong number of voting for alcohol and not against it, um, it's ours.
Well, I think he's asking...
I, I'm, I'm not sure, you're just asking questions, I mean, the, why is he getting all of them in room, you know, next to something, I'm just trying to have a better understanding, not source cap, well, it's like that question.
You need to go find a bill named Ivy Owen, Robert Engle.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, the closing hours, it says you can, the governing body of the city, uh, they fix by one, that says closing hours, that aren't prescribed by state law, but no later than two hours after the full public hours Saturday night.
Well, I don't want to, we need to go ahead and set that, we'll go ahead and set it at ten o'clock.
Five, the very last one.
Nobody has a problem with setting closing hours at ten o'clock?
Well, I mean, let's say, revenue's safe, if yours is closing hours, if you want to stop sales without calling at two o'clock.
Set them at two o'clock, we open on Sunday, where we had all that, and all eight, it's all states issue?
Save. Save.
I just need to know what state's back to.
And refer it back, yes, it says wherever, whatever.
But it can't be after two hours, that's you, Saturday night, so you can't, you can't be on Sunday, that works, two hours past.
Well, I, I will, trust me.
Can you read the name?
I'll be looking.
I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion, again, I'm not trying to press this issue, but we got a pretty full endeavor yet to come, and all we're doing is putting this on first reading by Title Only, there's time to circle back.
Yeah.
Uh, if you want to put ten o'clock in as the hours, just want to leave the way this for now and come back to it.
Mr. Brown, I make a motion to put this on first reading with the changes made.
Then we want to strike on section four, the...
With the changes made.
Are we changing that five there, or are we just going to leave that the same for now?
We'll leave, we'll leave it the same, because we haven't made a change.
Okay.
We'll pick it up same.
We have both in the same.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
And, and, an ordinance establishing a permitting process with people with a permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within the city of Greenwood, uh, businesses licensed by the state to sell alcohol beverages, levying permit fees and a city supplemental tax of ten percent on a beer, wine, and fourteen percent on mixed drinks on the immigrant seats which are derived up front. Refilling any ordinances in conflict, establishing penalties for violation of these provisions and further purposes.
Thank you. So did you get your question answered, Mr. Knobbe? Is my advice would be to contact municipal league, attorney, or...
I would contact...
That, that's your...
I would contact my...
Or be...
I was hoping the mayor is the one that, and this is, that's my attorney, my, my attorney said the mayor, and, and y'all call from a special election, it's not actually a state position, you have, or the governing body of the city, that's what my attorney told me, and so it's up to you to do the special election, so, I don't guess my attorney, he's called the law attorney, or how, how do these, I mean...
I think I can help, the name called Secretary of State, they're the ones that, that's all those rules.
But the law change in all this according to my attorney, uh, and it's, it's, it's a special election, it's not a election that gets, uh, done, like, I guess, one's serving the vice councilman, or what the situation is.
You just have your attorney call me, I, I worry, I'll be on the special time, so...
Okay. All right.
Yes. Chrissy, did you have something?
If it worked good, then I was just going to say thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, um, I may be totally lost where we are. Number one, we're planning building, work for dealing, replacing ordinance number thirteen dash ten, American Airlines third reading. Uh, Mr. Rell.
Mr. Dick, you moving here?
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, here, I'm here tonight, uh, to ask for the, uh, third Title reading on the, uh, ordinance revealing, replacing ordinance, uh, thirteen ten. Rod has, uh, presented some changes that he was interested in making, but I didn't get those in time, sort of in front of the planning commission last time, I got them last week, so, I guess, we're, we'll vote.
Well, a lot of that, I just make a motion to table it in another thirty days.
Well, I say, let's, uh, let's table it and, uh, give me a chance to bring it in front of the planning commission, you know, I don't know if they can do it in one meeting or not, and, and just put the table until I've re-interviewed it.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to table it until it's re-interviewed.
Uh, Mr. Henry, will it stay on third reading once it ever makes it back, or we got to go through?
No, it'll be on third.
Okay. Okay, I'll section for table.
Motion in second, table.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
Sonny, and don't forget to take the ordinance we just put on in first reading, planning commission.
The one that you just got through?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'll get a copy from...
We're interested in their feelings on that, four, I.
I'll get a copy from Charlotte, I'll go ahead and put it on the agenda, that way it's, it will be on the agenda, then I'll get the copy from Charlotte and the...
It's the placement and distance, and if it's the pleasure of the planning commission to go ahead and, maybe they don't like it, and they just soon set up entertainment districts, I'm open to that.
Yeah, uh, you know, we kind of look at entertainment district, and, and there's, you know, it's kind of like, uh, the, the same, uh, thing of where, where we could elect in Greenwood, you can't, you know, we're just, and the, the, uh, there's not, uh, seven eleven, even large, anywhere in Greenwood that can sell beer, you, you just can't, you know, it's, it's against the, all the, the boundaries there, and so an entertainment area would be about the same thing, you know, unless you want to put entertainment area outside of the city limits, where there's not a church or a school, and, you know, the way Greenwood is set up there, that it just kind of protects itself. So, you know, I think what we need to do is, you know, the commercial areas, and keep it in the commercial areas, the commercial, uh, strip along there, you know, whichever way we go with it. You just, you kind of large carve out a place, and you'd say, okay, this is entertainment area.
And take a look at this in our language, the way I've written it.
I got a question, are we operating under the old guidelines still, or we...
We'd still be operating under the present old guidelines, what's present, you talking about the commercial guidelines?
Yeah.
Yes, we'd still be operating under the current ones.
Or he'll be at, or anything. It's not with Gilverman that or anything yet.
Which one? The current.
The current.
The, the, the commercial guideline, yeah. You know, we're still operating under that, like I said, the, the, what started all this was the fact that the ordinance said that it was a, uh, it wasn't a ordinance, it was guidelines, and we had a couple of builders say, well, you know, that's, all sounds good and fine, but though it's just guidelines, so we don't have to follow.
Answer, are you getting that? You want me to withdraw my motion?
That's what I'm getting, I don't want to keep having that, like, you don't have any teeth.
Well, I don't know what your last changes were, what was different from the second reading, this is the third reading, we usually work pretty good with that.
Uh, I don't have, I understand they haven't seen it, but I'm just saying, there was a reason why we went and changed all that stuff, because we, we don't have no teeth.
Well, they're.
Because of that, because, you know, right now, we got somebody coming in, well, because I was fixing to build a garage last year to guideline, and I ain't got no. The more teeth I was trying to add, the more y'all are wanting to shift it back to them. And so we got shifted back to them.
You know, what, what?
It passed the second reading, didn't it? It passed the second reading, didn't it?
It was on, it's on the second reading. And we got into a conversation about the percentage of high volume building.
Rock, right, okay.
The percentage, let's clear, we, we didn't get into conversation, you and Sonny got into a conversation about.
The way that, the way that's set up now, Lance, is that we have a minimum of ten percent, we can ask for a hundred percent, but we have a minimum of ten percent, Rod's idea was, you know, set it at fifty percent or a hundred percent.
I'm not worried about percentages of rocks on front of buildings, what I'm worried about is to have some technical guidelines, so when somebody comes in and builds up the building next month, or so, we don't have nothing to place, they're going to say, that's a guideline, and I don't have to do that. So you want to ask it for the third reading, that was the whole point of, I mean, that's kind of why I was hesitant about voting, going to, just, I mean, you won't be there.
We're already tabled.
Well, but I thought that was the purpose of letting the commission, I mean, we had one thing to kind of do stuff behind us, and we were relying on the commission to kind of give us input.
The commission was the one that, that drew up the ordinance again. And, you know, we did that with the member governors on the commission, that included architects, that's a builder, you know, and all the people that, that should have been able to bring the, the ideas to the table. But the problem was, when we did it, we called it a guideline, not an ordinance. Everything, everything that was in that was approved by the planning commission, and we just didn't change that one word. And that's what we were trying to say.
Lance, Charlotte said we voted on it, so that's a good point.
Well, I'm just saying, though, the bottom line is, it's still a guideline, and it ain't a, I mean, cooking market all day long, it's nothing in stone.
We'll hopefully, if it's a good ordinance, it's really good, we'll try, I don't know, if Bush comes to show up, we'll get that.
That's all I was asking, we had, chase that rat around the room, so, all I was, make sure we had some teeth.
It's just confusing, and that, and like I said, a lot, Mike says that we've got the ordinance to back us up, and, and so that's, you know, that's what we would revert to. We were just trying to clear it up until when somebody picked it up, they know that it was a, a real ordinance.
I'll keep it on the, 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 the rating until we figure it out.
Thank you, Ms. Bill. All right. Number three, street, Lynn, pick up policy.
All right, let's turn this around a little bit, this gets positivity. So, anytime that you guys have our, uh, Lynn's policy, Lynn pick up policy.
We're for it.
Tom, I want to change bags from plastic, no more plastic bags, we can use compost, composting paper bags. I know you're just taking everything, loading it up in a big pile and burning it, but we need to get to where we're composting, and we need to get where we're starting to shred things.
City wants to buy those?
We're going to buy in a machine, I'm, I'm going to make sure, uh.
Don't talk about the bags.
The bags, no, they're responsible for buying their own bags.
We'll buy them. So you can put property owner?
Lance, you got that covered, we're buying property.
All this so much.
But the water, I mean, a lot.
That's, that's another item on the agenda. I think bags need to be composted.
You're saying the citizens are responsible for those bags?
They're responsible for our bags now.
He just saying we're going to pay the bill, paper bags, and we're not paying the plastic thirty gallon.
Right.
Paper bag.
Because all that body, it's wrapped up in all the mall, all the compost.
And even mine, a lot of these property owner recruits, limbs and the yard re-operate for weeks before they're out of the tub. So the paper bags are going to get wet and rot before we get their big rope. We may not be picking them often enough.
We'll understand, Travis, this is not the bottom of your mind.
I thought we were going to turn this around, I think we'll start over.
Let's start with positivity here.
All right.
Are we voting on this policy, or are you just?
I don't know.
Is this a thing that has been typed up, it's not part of any of our resolutions or ordinances?
Yeah, what is?
This is just something that started happening, and we did a specific arrangement apparently at some point.
This is policy, and it's in front of us to adopt it, it's official agreement with policy.
It is? I think we didn't make it a resolution though. Don't be right mind.
That's what we're watching.
Can I, can I say something? Tom Marsh, our, uh, our new finance guy, he said it's not even their responsibility to pick up limbs and leaves. He has been talking to our board of directors lately about street, and you know how street revenue is restricted? And they're picky about what street does, and they want the labor and all the money that goes to them from the state, to use the street terms, that's the intention. So now that they know that he's doing all this recycle deal, and limbs, and cut it off.
So he gets no money from general fund?
They're questioning it.
Does he not get any money from general fund? So.
I mean, is that a recycle center, or is that a general fund?
We're going to get it.
So if we all pay money for general fund, then that solves that problem.
Yeah, you can, you can see some money going to the street for whatever.
We're just going to have to fix it in the future.
Well, that's the, your.
I'm sorry.
Well, I answered a quarter of my offering question.
And that's a lot of money, the general fund for a street fund.
Well, this is what big cities do, they stick out these lines.
Well, they, uh, Tom says it goes through their, it's a, it's a contract that you will have with your sanitation.
That was what I'm saying, I'm not sure that they're going to get a sanitation, so.
And that's where the issue, I think, is going to end up on the, on the table of, if you will, whether we need to establish a sanitation department. And, and, no, I'm, I'm always saying, because we're hearing from the auditors, and as we all know, we like to do the right things with the auditors, and I'm saying they are all that end result, but, but there is this issue of where does it happen? And, and of course, the land is a question, where do you get the money, and?
Well, this is good. A little way, you can put it in the sanitation contract, contracts can let out.
Yeah, well.
What, what started out as, as a good thing, just that, that good policy for everybody in the city has turned out to be costly. And that's just what it all boils down to. We don't even have the call anymore, do we, no pockets policy tip?
No, and then we also start the curbs I picked up at six AM.
So some things have changed since then.
If we, if we handle all the calls, we know.
It's crazy, we have to ask, we still do calls.
So we all are wanting to put this in sanitation contract next time.
Yes.
Okay, well, it's poor timing to bring it up after the contracts went out.
Not our, Tom brought it part in.
We're just going to have, we, we're going to have to deal with it until that contract comes back up, and then we'll.
Well, I mean, like, what does Tom, I mean, saying that that's a state violation, whatever, to have.
He should say, he needs to say it's not the street department's job.
Well, that's because of the money.
Because of the money.
State.
Because of their.
All these street money problems.
It takes a lot of time and money to create your marketing, you'll take what that is.
And you might ask, if we've been doing that for years, and the answer is yes, but, but we, and I'm not, we have someone in there that is listening, and is paying close attention to the auditors.
Put a figure on it, what's the cost?
Some operating budgets, million dollars a year, it takes a quarter of my month to do.
To go one day a month?
It's not one day a month.
It's not.
They can't do it all.
It's a week to do it. Just to pick up limbs.
You're, you're spending one week a month, a fourth of your time.
That's why I'm saying we need to find a place, because for, for citizens just to dump it, it take no lot of damage, like we were talking about too, so, but, you know, here, you could dump here, if you're a resident, you know.
It's still, it's still not, it doesn't solve the problem, and still it's going to take a fourth of its time. You're saying that you're just going to provide a place where it's.
That one's picked up, I mean, that's, because it's getting viewed from that time. I mean, I'm.
But the whole point of having the limb pickup was people that didn't have any views.
Yeah, Rod started because of, because of the, because of the.
Rod, because of the drainage.
And the drainage stuff, and all that.
The whole thing gets more.
I mean, it's.
And we handle it.
Babysitting projects want to do this, but that's why I was just making the suggestion, if we have places designated, you know, if they have a, for a water pump, or, you know, a water leak or whatever, we can figure out some kind of system, if, if we had a place to dump it.
I think seventy-five percent of people use it, don't have the ability to load it up and take it, it's little old ladies.
It's not necessarily.
Maybe not, maybe not that much.
There's people that, that are pretty good. Robert and Matt, and Lynn Brown.
I'm, I'm just saying, though, I mean, I, I think it's a service that we provide, it's, it's good for, for certain things, and I, and it's kind of, we do a lot of things, we offer services to people that need stuff, you know, little lady calls and says she needs a limb pickup, we might, we might do that, but people like myself, I'm not, I'm not going to take limbs out to the road. I'm going to get rid of them, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, this.
I mean, I said that before, I have.
It's part of being a property owner, in my book, in my book.
I agree. I have no problem helping somebody that needs help.
But don't you got these landscape companies that are cutting this stuff down, and pile it up out there, because they don't have a big landfill to pay money, because all the signs are going to be picking it up.
Mary, I drove by a lot today, it has zero trees on it, and a big pile of the limbs out there for some.
I think the way to treat those, like, people with high.
That's why I was just saying that you're, you're responsible, well, we had a place, we had a machine to all shut stuff up, and then turn it around, and, you know, it just has a place to do it, you know, to offer and dump it.
Well, there again, I mean, if we, you know, I, I like her idea, but, but there again, we talked about, you know, tree services, it all prevent them from just robbing in there, you know, all day long, and, and that thing, stuff that really should be.
Well, you have, I, I swear, I say, you have to have a system of some sort, whether it's behind a lock and key, you had to come by the city, you know, and I also know they're adding pressure to some of you, but, but something would have to be.
Well, I mean, it's kind of like part of our recycling system, is that we need to have somebody there to kind of supervise that, because if there's nobody there, then lots of things get dumped that, that shouldn't be done.
There's a lot of what is doing, but I just think it's.
And it's all, to me, all part of, kind of a big recycling system, that, hey, this is where, you know, somebody's there saying, just to verify.
Just a prime example, the guy that's re-modding the house down for me, and I, I think, things like four or five dump trucks loads of stuff.
Y'all do the recycling center, right?
No, sir, this under general fund.
That's under what, general fund? Okay, so who, who goes over and manz that, kind of, for example? Well, there, there again, that's my point, so.
We all plan it, it's planned under the general fund, because we can't have it under the street department.
So it needs, so this limb pickup needs to go, like I see, says, just altogether with recycling?
Yeah, we've been, the, the mayor and I have been discussing the whole recycle center and managing it, and, uh, different options, because I was, I was talking to him about maybe hiring somebody to be the board of the recycle center, but I can't really hire somebody for the recycle center, because it's a general fund issue, and I can't pay for somebody to labor his street fund to manage that.
Is there a way to, if we had somebody that we hired to deal with the recycling center, could they share their time doing the limb pickup as well?
Picking it up or supervising it.
Drop off. Yeah, you know, this drop off location, of course, um, now, if you're talking about shredding all the limbs, that really didn't need to repeat, or to the sanctuaries, and you don't want somebody there operating the chip without themselves, because then accidents happen, so.
What's the reality of, of the city's position, and we're only going to pick up limbs that meet whatever requirements for those who need? I don't know how you say, I don't know how you assess the fact that they need.
Yeah, you got police or something else.
That's kind of back to that deal we give to sanitation.
I don't know how we assess it, you can't get your trash out the curb, but we do.
Right, exactly.
I mean, it says something in that sanitation contract, that, you know, I mean, you got to.
Yeah, they have to, you know, the, the curb, the curbs are, they have, they have to sit, they have to call and let us know, and, and I don't know that any of us have gone and checked that, you know, but that's, that's up to the, that's up to Alvis at this particular time, if that person needs that, that. No, if, yeah.
I don't like what you do at all.
No, yes, you are.
It just says at the last, it says, so that the street department can see that there's no garage or dirt inside, it just goes away.
We, we don't even want to let those, let's be honest with you, because I think they're letting those to get wet. Actually, we, we, this is not the latest letter.
Is it not?
No, the, the latest letter is online, but the latest, the latest letter, we've, uh, put a weight, max weight on the bag, so.
What, I mean, this feels like this is something I've seen. Well, I'm just saying, it just feels like, that, that this is an expensive undertaking, it's time consuming, that we, that we stumbled into at the ice storm years ago, and, and now we've created a monster that we can't continue to feed legally without, without sending general fund money to it. And what happens if we just stop limb pickup?
Now, what happened before the ice storm, how was that?
What happens if we just say, look, this is a big deal, and we're, we're not going to pick up limbs.
First Tuesday's level was before the ice storm, that was always in there. I would call down here and say, I got limbs in forty-four west Denver, okay, and they come out first Tuesday morning. You'd have to get on.
I mean, I, I don't start that way, it's just that it lasted.
Right.
I mean, we still say.
There's fifteen thousand more houses.
But are these people, these limbs you're picking up, in your estimation, is it people that need our help, or is it just people abusing the system?
I think it's just, uh, you know, of course, we're saying that, that.
Let's be serious, I don't think people are using the system, I mean, if you, if you tell me, if you tell me this is the system for the city, I'm going to say, okay, quite cool, I'm glad I live in the city where they pick up my limbs, and I'm going to stick them out there. But if you, if you tell me that's not a service you offer, okay, I'm going to find another place to take my limbs, you know, I'm, I'm great at wood and folks.
I might be able to address your concerns a little bit, and I talked to, to Chief Ryan, that, well, actually, he came to me after last meeting, last, last city council meeting, because he was concerned that people would start burning in the yards again. So if we were to do that, you know, that strongly encouraged maybe doing a fire ban, maybe in the city, if burned the brush and the debris, uh, he's, he's scared that people want to take them all together, that there's going to be increases in fire, wildfire, gas fire, where the, um, case might be. So now what people want to do with your.
I'm taking it, I'm in my. I thought, I'm taking it to the ultimate. Yeah, well, that's what I do, I mean, I just pile it in the trailer and all of it there, and I got a place where I had a compost, and I pay my twenty-two dollars or whatever it is, or drive to wherever they tell me to drive, and I dump it, it's like I did with all my large items, it doesn't drive, I just.
My large items, we had.
And the main reason, one of the main reasons I do that with my live stuff is, number one, I don't want to start a fire, because I get up there and.
Same.
And number two is, I don't want to cut mine into, I don't want to cut mine into little sections and tie them up like from the trailer, take them, dump it.
You have a facility, you have.
Well, I know. How many of these people?
No, 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 no.
I'm just telling you, I think there'd be people finding a way to take.
That was, that was all.
This is, this is what came in last, last year.
I just turned it wrong. Turned the old one. I'm old, just get rid of it.
How's this different than what we had?
Um, it, it, it doesn't have the requirement that you call it in, because the, the, we couldn't handle the amount of calls, and then it also states that six AM, there's also a change, and, um. The, uh, the weight, you know, um, must, the weight of the bags must not be more than forty pounds, um, I think that's pretty much the gist of it.
Other, other communities, I mean, they, when I lived in Fayetteville, there was a limb pickup, but I, I just assumed that it's a sanitation department, though. In other communities, is it a street or is it sanitation?
Well, it's a street, it's a street and sanitation department combined, a lot of cities have street and sanitation. And I, you know, I proposed to, to, the last time we did the concrete, buy double trash trucks and take them to sanitation.
And you're in Conway, that they do coordination, that recycling, that, that we do sanitation.
Sanitation does, not the street does.
They have, they do have their own sanitation system, which I'm not, I'm not saying we need one.
Sure.
No, it's just another.
It sounds like, it sounds like we may get a situation where, depending on what the state auditors and finance director says, well, we may be taking it in order with how we utilize the street now anyway. Sounds like maybe in a situation where, depending on what the state auditors and finance director says, well, we may be paying in order with how we utilize the street now anyway.
I think we definitely need to run into the contract next time we let the contract down.
What if the next time we do budget, our new finance director agrees with the state auditor and says, this is inappropriate piece of funds. And now we're forced to make a change in our policy. Can we not amend our sanitation contract? Is there not language in there that allows us to?
I think he will definitely be having that budget.
We'll.
Cause he will bring it up.
We want to table this particular issue until we can, I mean, I don't.
Yes, it's kind of like the guy wants to, we just went through with the, you know, we need to, we need to be some kind of, we got, I mean, it needs to be doing something, needs to know what to do or what to do or.
What about, you and I talked a little bit about not doing it, is, I mean, not every, not once a month, every quarter, I mean, to.
I think really until we come up with a good option, if these ones picked up or yard area, just standing this like the way it is right now. Cause at least we're getting something done and then we can work on a better alternative in the future. Well, it's a catch twenty-two by the quarterly deal because one, you think, well, they'll take it themselves, but after a month, they'll think, my gosh, I'll just do it myself. Or you come back in three months and it's five, every house that's.
Seven weeks, you're picking up for a month.
For a month, so.
Well, I mean, as far as, I mean, limbs are mere one thing. I mean, as far as grass clippings, hedge clippings. You know, I think like that, I mean, do, again, is that always in the street or the, because I think the sanitation doesn't want.
They will, they will. That, that is specific in the contract, they will not.
Dead gum in my trash can, they will leave their trash.
And so, I mean, I would think definitely. Flippings and, you know, I mean, that's gonna be one of, you know, once a quarter.
I feel like the, the, is there, Simon, in your policy, so what's the diameter requirement on a limb?
Right now it's six inches.
Where is that in here?
It's a big old last header down there at the bottom, usual double, double spaced, small caps.
The first one.
Oh, no, the first one is old. The one that refers to garage instead of garbage?
I think the diameter is too big.
Would not, yeah. Would not. I think six inches would cost you part of the, in my book, you know, I'm, I'm gonna.
I think the diameter should be two inches or less.
Two inches below.
I mean, something that a walker would handle, you know.
Now, the majority of our pickup is usually two inches or less, we obviously do it right now, so it's very seldom that we're actually picking up.
Trees. You're just picking up flippings.
Right.
I think two inches or less is flippings and that's a service to the city that we should provide, but beyond that, we're picking up cut trees, I don't.
Yeah, the whole tree service, I agree. I agree.
And that might cut down, well, you've already said the majority of it.
So we're, should we wait at your preference, Simon, is that we wait till we do clarifications?
I like Ross, the amendment to this, we'll make those changes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just hold it now.
Do we need to vote on that change?
Hey, but I'd like to somehow get the word out. I don't know what kind of, all of the people in this town read, do they read the papers, they look on the website or? I'm sure Facebook's probably the way to go, but we need to get this word out, that here's what we're fixing, new limb plan. And if you don't clean it up yourself, it's bigger than two inches, we have witnesses with a junky lawn stuff, we'll come start sparring against the limbs if they start piling up. We need to make it clear, let everybody know what our policy is. I mean, really get going on, is this a huge process by the bad straight dogs? I think, I mean, we need, we need to shuffle them out the top and this deal, once we get something set, set in stone, you know, I just feel like this is a big one here.
Well, it is because it takes them just a while, I mean, these guys can do it in so much time.
And the man I'm in, we need to do it even more at the auditor, the budget.
Well, I think, I think that maybe are out, you know. We would love to keep doing it for him, but it's not what the state.
But I guess on the other, other side of that, I mean, we would still be picking up grass clippings where we don't, or. I know this might be where people have, you know, leaves dropping out. I mean, I know one, you know, other lady says she swept up fifteen bags of leaves.
I think if the auditor stance is that the street department can't pick up limbs, they can't pick up edge clippings or leaves or anything, they can do street maintenance, street work. Anything else, we're gonna have the budget separately. We still can budget that, we can choose as a, as a city to budget general fund money for hedge flipping pickup, but it's gonna have to be general fund and not string money unless.
I may allow a transfer of money from general to street that we side covers, whatever.
Well, I think on one hand we are a tree city USA.
And that's one of the big reasons why, is because we're using that, right, Sonny?
Yes.
Using that to get our credits.
The limb pickup?
Yeah, that's it. It's almost probably ninety percent.
You figure the, the equipment per hour, the manpower per hour and all that, and you add that up and it, you know, I think normally it's forty, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars that we could use to apply to.
It helps with the fire wise too.
Usually the limb pickup gets us the tree city USA designation.
Yeah.
Just on its own. And then also it plays into us being a fire wise community.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this, what do we get out of getting a tree city USA?
What do we get out of it? We're cool.
We get a sign.
Get stickers.
I was just wondering if there was like funding or if it helps with what, you know.
That we pay for.
We pay for the sign?
Yeah. We have a way.
Our, our sanitation contract is for three years, is that right? With a three year contract, our sanitation contract.
Yes.
Changes from five to three.
There's, there's outs in the contract.
Any, either party can cancel.
Yeah, doesn't call them hard, doing their part.
I understand that. I, I would be interested, you know, you mentioned that you brought up the idea of sanitation department purchasing trucks and that. That you brought it up, it came to, it came to that sort of lay of the process of this deal. I'd be happy to entertain and hear your ideas on how that runs in the black. You know, if you think the city can run a sanitation department in the black, that doesn't cost us money. And to provide some of these services in a way that's good or better than the contract combined, I'd listen to that. It might not be what we want to do, but I think it'd be worth.
You know, research that I did on is very viable option. You know, sanitation companies wouldn't be a business if there wasn't money or nothing.
Now, you guys could just come and then set separate contract just for them to pick up and just say you got a.
We can put it out to bid. We can put it out to bid and let people come in and bid on the.
We're gonna reach out to the curb, the sanitation public, say, we're gonna have a limb pickup.
I like that idea that Richard's got, they'll put it out for bid for, I mean, Greg Kate might be on it. Why didn't you say that twenty minutes ago?
So we put it out for the bid and we accepted it. Will we pay it out of general fund or will we pay it out?
General fund. And if we can, if we can go buy some trucks and run a business that, that stays in the black, out of water. And we pay, and we charge to feed, that, I mean, it may not make any business sense at all, but if it does.
You could monitor a contract for years to make any money off of it.
Yeah.
Still one year contract.
You talked for your firm, limb pickup.
I'm talking about sanitation department.
I think they're only putting that to bid.
I'm putting that to bid, I'm exploring some other way besides the city doing it, I'm also, besides the street department doing it, I'm also for listening to proposals and ideas about sanitation department. If it doesn't cost the city a bunch of money, you know, it's something they can pay for itself.
The initial purchases of the equipment would be the yard part, but I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it was one year you paid for one of your trucks. It was probably, so every, every year they're, they should have enough money to buy one truck. You got to start out with two trucks, so it should just get a breakdown.
I'll tell you this, forceless sanitation, there, there are departments out there that's not frugal at all because they've got so sneaky much money. I mean, that's coming from some of the different department people up there. They let them, I mean, they, they got all the bills and devices in their offices, in their training rooms and, I mean, it's because it's one hundred percent profit.
They do have a nice facility up there.
I mean, I went there today, I went there today and dumped a sixteen foot trailer load of stuff and it was eighty bucks.
They're dumping things.
We think what our dumping thing is.
They own the dump, so.
No, we don't, we don't need a dump.
But I'm just saying, though, what do you do? It's, it's trash, I mean, it's, I mean, I figured it would probably, if it was worked right, it would be, I might say a profit, but it would be, I think it would like we said, I think it'd be, you could build it black, it would run by.
All right.
Hey, do we want to move this street stuff up? We talked about.
We did talk about that.
I mean, there's a couple of the street things.
Do you want me to talk down on the floor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I contacted Mr. Comer about the property used at city hall. Hundred percent of the property is in the bloodwood itself.
How much?
Hundred percent of it, all of it, in the bloodwood. So he booked that property up and he wants a lot of money for it, so. You know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for just a little bit of it, not even the whole property. The problem that I had, the reason I stopped really pursuing anything with that is because I'm worried that who were to purchase that property, Mr. Comer. That the corporate engineers might be kind of aware of all that bill material that's placed in the bloodwood. And it could be illegal, wrong to the city.
I think at one time, about twenty years ago, they were injecting rases into that property as well.
Yeah, so, so I haven't really followed that up anymore because of, first off, the price of the oil high. Cause sanitation is sold down on the industry that's half the price of this property and it's a good property. You know, so then we can add other avenues for something along the lines, but then we kind of, you know, since we talked last month, we also figured it's kind of out of the recycle center. It's primarily something that the street department should spend money on, so there comes another issue right there, all that sells.
We don't want any part of this back here, man. I agree. Run from it.
We don't intend it already.
Yeah, that's, that's curious.
Okay.
But I'm sure one of the.
There yet to ask a question.
I agree.
And, oh, yeah.
And the, you know, ADQ.
Right.
Okay, so we're, no.
Yeah, four is up there.
Okay, you want to move limb, bring eight up to him?
Sure.
Done. About the resolution to the camera system?
What this resolution is for is purchase of camera system to cover the front rear entrances or shop and as well as the recycle facility. There's a lot that's been going on in the recycle facility. The reason I also included recycle facility into this estimate was because the Sebastian County solid waste district. Is proposing to pay possibly half the budget, heading for both their budget. So that, that half was approved, then we'll come back to the street, the street department. It's terribly expensive, a camera system.
That sounds very hot, like, very, 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 very.
Um, it, this kid, it had, they had installed a new pole in the recycle facility. And there's quite a few cameras involved with the system. And then it's all wifi, it's wireless, but it's not have, a lot of wiring available already in place for the, for the system. So that you have wifi repeaters to take that wifi out and also the recording. This, this, this isn't like a, like a home security system, this is a high dollar camera system.
Like Apple's, what's the one at the, the pavilion, what was that, it's indoor and all that?
Well, part of it's indoor, we've got seven cameras, half of them are outside.
How much was that?
We should ask if that would be. Six dollars. And that's, that includes DDR. Six grand, I forgot. It's monitoring also, so that.
I can get you a figure again.
Is this the only system you looked at?
It is. I contacted a, a company there, can't remember their name, enforcement that's specialized to do this kind of work and they're the ones that give us. Took me a bid for this and came out and visited with me. You know, we had, it's been a lot of it, a lot of people dumped the tires and refrigerators and just garbage at nighttime even. This just became a real big issue and then we fed the issue that Mr. Henry and I discussed about, the stuff that came up missing. It did give us a little bit better control, give me better control of our assets and whatnot.
I, I guess if we find somebody, you know, dumping stuff illegally, I mean, do we have that addressed about how we handle that or?
There's, there's tax charges that you rent that, and not, I think that's cool, maybe we might even have to call ADQ right here or something else. But they can investigate it, show it there.
We've got, we've got a lot of these tires this year, just look outside of our gate. These camera systems will hopefully catch those people and act. We'll see their license plates and fill the turnover wall.
Okay. Some of them might be my scouts. I've got, they're pulling tires from Greenwood Lake on the track and I'm telling them to put them over here by, by the dumpsters.
Yeah, you can't do that.
So where do they hit it?
Uh.
Over in the lake?
See, if you do that, we have to pay to have it disposed of, city does.
So we got tires on public property that's owned by the city of Greenwood. I'm cleaning them up. Can the city not find a way just to get them disposed of if I've got free labor dragging them out of the lake, dragging them out of the woods and putting them right here by the dumpster?
I would say yes, but if you're not telling anybody that you're putting them there, then it's.
Okay, I'm telling everybody now.
Yeah.
I'm putting tires over here by the dumpster that's coming off of, out of the public parks and out of the lake. So we're doing free cleaning up and free labor and putting them right here.
Well.
The city, the city can find a way to properly dispose of it.
And I, I agree if I can, but if somebody, a young citizen comes by and sees a bunch of tires there and he says, oh, I can do that then too. And I, I commend the Boy Scouts for doing that, but I think that, again, that's kind of falls back to where a camera system, we can monitor that thing. So if I agree with the Boy Scouts, great, now that it's somebody else, no, it's not.
Nobody's ever notified me the tires are being placed there for a year.
There's, there's ten of them coming.
Yeah, but nobody's ever notified me.
They're being notified.
Yeah.
There's ten coming.
Do you think you could ask for the tire shops here in town that recycle old tires, that they would take those?
They usually have a fee, like three dollars per tire. Environmental fee. They're coming off the city, city property, the city can pay that environmental fee.
What about the big roll offs over there?
You can't put them in a roll off because they won't take it at the dump because the tires, they, they have to, they've got a proper disposal.
Does it seem like they throw everything in there?
Well, that may be where they, they end up, but we're, I'm not gonna put them in there.
I guess. Countywide cleanup, I mean, you make up.
No, they, they were taking them, but they're so costly to get rid of now. I, I remember, I was kept on the hill town, walking from our apartment and we did a clean up, I want to say like three, four years ago. And they spilled a lot of tires. They had trailer full of tires and that, that, after that, it just went more. And they haven't done since because they got so many tires, people run away. And, you know, a lot of people just don't want to pay that fee when they do with the tires gone. So they say, well, I just, you know, I might use it, and then they dump, they dump it somewhere, like it's late for, outside the gate or recycle center, or the case might be.
Well, with this camera system, I guess, is it a one time fee or is it an ongoing fee?
Yes, it's one time, one time fee.
I've got an answer for our system up there, sixty-seven hundred. I've got an answer for our system up there, sixty-seven hundred dollars. It's a lot, you're right, it's about seven grand, and then a hundred and nine dollar a month monitoring fee, and that goes far along, so just the camera system, if you've got trouble recording, about sixty-seven.
Yeah, I, uh, well, we don't have a, we have room in the budget for nine hundred dollars, I mean, I think we have, have some type of monitoring up there for the recycling center, I mean.
I think we might explore something a little cheaper, if it's possible, but.
We, we did cheaper, um, prior to me coming here, there is a cam, there is a couple of cameras in the recycle center now, and they go to a little monitor about this big, and they can't, but, you can't, they don't, they don't work anymore, first off, but, you know, what you can see, is that, is, is there's no recording, there's no nothing, you know, plus the wiring involved with that, it'd be, it'd be time-consuming and expensive to install a system.
Why are we doing this when we're just weeks away from going through budget, why isn't this, why don't we just finish your budget?
Not a lot of business for them to be good.
We can just spend it immediately, January one, you can go out and buy your cameras, let's look at it in the budgetary process, which is just gonna happen.
Well, to answer your question, the money is there, I mean, obviously, I mean, it's not, wasn't for this specifically, but it's there available, uh, you know, yeah, I mean, it's y'all's choice to, when, when you do it, but it was pointed out to me that this is not really for the recycling center, as much as it is for the street department, correct? I mean, you can, you can aim a camera over there, but it's really for.
It would have, it would have cameras also this, the recycle center.
I mean, the conversation has almost gone more about.
Because if we're taking money out of the street, then you know, make sure that this part of this.
You're gonna end up in the same.
Yeah, when I spoke with, uh, with Tom about this, I said, you know, because there'll be cameras.
You can encompass.
And he said, he says, well, it's just kind of a, who pays for it?
Well, we pre-talked about it, we didn't bother about that, because he said recycle center shouldn't be passed, or you.
Which, which, on the same token, if you had a camera, I don't know where your cameras would be, but we could actually hang, or is it four, five, or five, or six, or seven, or eight, or nine?
I agree with Rob, we need probably just a little bit of budget time, but I will, to Simon's defense, I will say, because I, I have some cameras at my house, and I mean, they're not inexpensive, but they're not, I mean, but you give what you pay for, doesn't it? No, I mean, my stuff works, the cords, DVR, the whole nine yards, but.
You got it for a different purpose, though.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I already, I already ran on my cameras, I mean, I know they're decent, but for what he's wanting to do, I mean, it's gonna cost some money.
Yes, I mean, to me, if you want to be able to read a license plate.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, if you want to be able to see that, and get us, you're gonna have to, I mean, you're gonna spend some money, I mean, it's, I mean, just like.
So the money is not worth it for something else, we talked, they just said it was in the budget, but it was somewhere else, if you had.
Okay, so, what do you, what's the pleasure of the council on this?
Well, if you say it's already in there, I'll say, look, you know, go ahead and put it in there, and then it'll be, it will be included in the budget for next year, well, huh?
No.
No, no, he's asking us, this year, but it's what he's asking, but, but you're, when I say it's in there.
If we have the money, and they'll, I'd say they'll go ahead and do it, I mean, because I think it's a, it's a problem, it's an issue, and even have it.
He's, he's transferring it, right, I mean, you're really not, you're taking it from them, checking it.
This increasing the spend, they need to be checking.
Right, the money is there, yeah, yeah.
You don't spend that money by the end of the year.
Yeah, you don't, you just have to re-budget.
You gotta re-budget.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, they, they see if we're gonna, at some, at some point, we're gonna buy this camera system.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see why we need to kick it down.
I'd like a motion for a resolution.
Second. Motion is second. Yes.
Yes.
How? Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Senter.
No.
Let's her.
Yes.
Get passes by majority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rob.
There are two of the funniest resolutions that involve the street, there's, you know, twelve, thirteen.
You guys are cool with this.
Yeah.
The question was forced to pass it without a year.
Um, number, number twelve is about the resolution that money is made into repaired buildings for the street department, um, you know, our building model, I don't know what they need now, and, uh, so we said, oh, oh, fine, just add funds.
Do we have that resolution, folks?
Yeah, exactly.
Again, that's, uh, that's, that's.
Yes.
There is work in the budget for that, and, uh, well, uh, street department, trees. So you're saying soon, you just come out, you just come out and support us, I'd like to have a resolution, or a, or a resolution.
Sir?
Your, um, you have to write that.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, that's correct, yeah.
That's second.
Your motion is second, approved.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Fennel. Senter.
Yes.
You got a baggy uniform.
No, that's chief.
I thought it said street uniform, I thought it was a street uniform, we're down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no clue where we are.
They were the oats.
We're everywhere.
We are, number six, planning?
Yeah.
Walt, Mr. Bell's on his way up, chief, how's your father-in-law?
He's talking, but not very well, he doesn't feel anything at all.
I failed to, to let the council know, I meant to do it all night long, and we got, it was interesting to say please, so, your father-in-law coded earlier today?
Yeah, they did CPR, and something, so I thought we were pretty fortunate to be able to talk to him, but Jessica's there, but he's been to Bill, at the hospital there.
James, group.
Uh, council, I'd like to, um, this is a ordinance that I'd like for you to get approved, it's for vacating a utility, like in the oak subdivision, uh, it is lots one through eleven, and if you enter into the oak, it's the lot on the right-hand side of the street, the original subdivision showed that as a utility easement on the east side, or the houses, but because of the requirements for the planning division of maintaining a buffer zone between them and the Dawson Valley, people, the utilities are moved to the front of the property along the street sidewalk, and so this area back here that was originally designed for the utility easement, is not being used, and by vacating that, that gives the people that, uh, are buying that property more use of their backyard, if they want to do a swimming pool or something like that, and so, planning division has approved it, and is going to bring it from, uh, the council there.
So what would be the easement in, off the back property line? Zero?
The, well, if you would have a, a setback, a backyard setback, but there would not be a utility easement back in the back.
There's a lot of construction that may go on north of there, I don't understand why we'd give away an easement that we already have, because we may need that someday, especially if it develops more to the north.
Utility is already running in the front of the property.
And what's the easement on Dawson Valley Estates off the back?
Off, off Dawson Valley, I couldn't tell you, I would imagine it's up off the front of their property.
Well, if it's only ten feet or seven feet, that doesn't give much room for utilities to run, we could have problems later on in utilities being accessed.
But there are no utilities.
Yep, but there's no utilities on my easement off my back, in, off my lot, in my backyard, but there might be someday, I don't think I should petition to give it up, I don't think the city.
It just, it just, uh, the, the property owners along that area, that, uh, it gives them more availability of their backyard, like if they want to build a swimming pool or something like that, they, uh, are, uh, an accessory building, anything like that, that it limits their use of the backyard because, for.
Well, I've got the same argument on my backyard, Len says the same argument on his backyard.
Well, like I said, the planning division looked at it, they, they recommended, uh, vacating it, uh, that's, that's up to you, Don.
So there, are you saying there is a, the planning division said that there is enough of the easement in the front of these?
Yeah, it's, all the utilities are already there.
They're already there.
Yeah.
But you know, they come back someday, and they want to run big fiber optic lines, where we can get the news, last greatest TV, and all this, and we don't have it, we give it away, and that makes no sense.
So that'd be easement in the front.
Most utilities, most utilities in Greenwood are running in the back.
Um, I'm, I'm.
I just don't understand why we'd give that away, and that, that argument, that seems to make sense, and you don't know what you have off of Dawson Valley, if there's twenty feet off of Dawson Valley, then it looks like you have plenty, because most lots in Greenwood are ten on one side and ten on the other, and then we have a twenty-foot easement that the city owns, that we, that's where our revenue comes from on, uh, franchise fees, we could be giving up half of our rights to have utilities run things through there for franchise fees, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, on the other side of that, if we knew, I guess, the easement in Dawson Valley, you know, maybe that was.
That's what I said, if there's twenty feet over there, I can see it.
Okay.
What does this dotted line represents on here, is that, that eastern?
So what is the distance there?
Ten yards.
Ten feet.
I mean, that shows a ten-foot green space, but that dotted line represents an easement line, yes, that's pretty wide.
That's the buffer that, that the developer left there to separate Dawson Valley and, and, uh, the oaks.
Where do you, where do you see thirty feet?
I'm just banking on, he's got ten foot designated where it's a green space, just kind of eye-mauling the size from the edge of that green space, that dotted line is about three times as wide as that ten-foot one.